This committee on appropriations, public debt, legal affairs, retirement, public parks, recreation, historic preservation of land will now come to order. I apologize for the short delay. We were waiting for a PowerPoint presentation, but I think we can do some of the oral presentations and still follow with that when that gets here. I want to first acknowledge my colleagues who are here this evening for this very important presentation. To my right is the legislative secretary, Senator Tina Mornier-Barnes. To her right is the Speaker of the Guam Legislature.
My left.
My other left. To your right is the Speaker, Speaker Judy Wampat, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, Senator Mike Lintiaco. To my right, yes, Senator Mike Nicholas, Senator Tom Ada, and Senator Frank Uggan. We have one bill on today, which is Bill 394. Before I begin, I wanted to address the issue of whether or not we've given sufficient notice. On Tuesday, the 16th, we sent out electronic media listing for this hearing. On the 19th, we also sent out another media listing. On the 19th, we published in the Pacific Daily News, an ad. On the 20th, we published in the Marianas Variety, an ad for today's hearing. On Sunday, we published an ad in the Guam PDN and in the Marianas Variety. On Monday, we published in the Guam Pacific Daily News again and in the Marianas Variety. I'm stating this only because, as important as this issue is, I wanted to make sure that everybody out there knew. On top of that, there were articles that were printed in the Guam PDN on the 4th, when I first introduced the bill, on the 5th in the Marianas Variety, on the 6th in the Guam PDN again, and on the 23rd, there was a story today in the Guam PDN and in the Marianas Variety. There were other presentations, and I want to thank members of their retirement fund. I understand that the treasurer of the retirement fund, Mr. Cruz, made a presentation about this retirement hybrid plan at an Association for Government Accountants conference, and I understand Mr. David John also made a presentation on Wednesday, the 17th. So the government accountants were included in getting this word out on the 17th and the 18th. I did an interview with Ray Gibson on K-57. Speaker Joe T. discussed Social Security, the retirement fund, and the hybrid plan on Friday, the 12th of September. Letters of invitation to this public hearing were sent to the governor of Guam, the attorney general, the officer of the public auditor, the Chamber of Commerce, the mayor's council, and Guam Retirement Fund. I thank you for allowing me to list all that, just to make sure that I cover myself, and I told the staff that we needed to pay the money to publish in the papers, to make sure that every government employee knew about this. If I had the blast email listing, I would have done that, but I don't know if I could have gotten a hold of that. So anyway, the one bill that's on today is an act to add a new Article 5 to Title 4, Chapter 8 of the Guam Code annotated to create a new hybrid retirement system with mandatory participation by government employees hired after December 31st, 2014, with optional participation for defined contribution retirement system participants who elect to transfer to the new hybrid plan in accordance with regulations to be promulgated. Over four years ago, Senator Ben Pangolinen recognized a potentially serious problem, and as was his manner, he began to work on addressing that challenge in a deliberate and meaningful way. Today, a 40-year-old member of the retirement contribution system, also known as the D.C. Plan, averages an account balance of just $40,000. Recognizing this fact, Speaker Ben, a lifelong advocate of our retirees, the aged and the sick, knew that by themselves, these average account balances could not provide D.C. Plan members with the dignity of secure retirement after a lifetime of work. To this end, three points were clear to him. One, without enough to sustain themselves, potentially thousands of future retirees could find themselves forced onto the welfare roles. Two, allowing the status quo to persist was both morally wrong and financially irresponsible. Three, any proposed plan for reform demanded the full involvement of the government of Guam Retirement Fund and holistic approach that struck a balance between our abiding commitment to retirees, their survivors, and the budgetary needs of this government. Bill 394 is the shared work of professional and certified actuaries, investment advisors, legal counsels, retirement professionals at the retirement fund, numerous joint working sessions with the retirement fund board of trustees, Speaker Ben, and this committee. Shortly, the retirement fund representatives will describe our hybrid plan proposal to you in detail, but for those of you listening at home, I will cover the major points now. One, if you are presently a member of the D.C. Plan, participation in the hybrid is optional. Two, the hybrid plan includes both a defined benefit plan component and a defined contribution component, a fact referenced throughout this measure and in every public statement I have made on this matter. Three, the defined benefit component of the hybrid plan provides a floor, a guaranteed safety net upon which the D.C. Plan members may rely if they join the hybrid. Generally speaking, at age 65, a hybrid plan member will receive a benefit of 1.75% of each year of service. This amount will be based on that employer's three highest annual base salaries. Additionally, a reduced retirement option also exists for individuals wishing to retire at the minimum age of 55. Four, the hybrid plan also has a D.C. component. Under our proposal, hybrid members will participate in a deferred compensation program or what some may know as a 457 plan. This means that a mandatory 1% of an employee's annual base salary will be contributed towards the same investment options presently available within the D.C. system. I want to also address the argument that the D.C. Plan component combined with Social Security is a preferred option to the bill before us today. In fact, some of you remember, 10 years ago, when I first came into the legislature, I introduced two separate bills to try to address getting onto the Social Security system. In fact, some of you may also remember that just a few months ago, I joined with my colleagues in supporting an amendment to federal law allowing Guam to begin the process of negotiating with the Social Security Administration. While that vote was well-intentioned, and my bills were well-intentioned, and based on the best information available to us at the time, new evidence and an analysis conducted by the retirement fund's actuary brings me to a different conclusion. The actuarial study found that a D.C. slash Social Security plan option would actually be more costly to both the employee and the government. Two, this means less net pay for the employee and a greater demand on government resources when compared to the hybrid plan. Three, based on current Social Security laws, employees who also receive a government pension could also be subject to provisions that substantially reduce their Social Security benefit, and I'm hoping the retirement fund will address that windfall elimination provision in Social Security, because I really am concerned about some people talking about the fact that having a combination is going to be in the best interest of the employees. And five, the analysis specifically held that the Gov-Guam retirement contribution rate would increase by around 3%. While the retirement fund is available to discuss this study further, I chose to continue Senator Ben's work on this bill because I believed we could not afford to wait on an act of Congress that may never come, and because I could not, in good conscience, choose an option that would raise the government's contribution rate beyond what we could presently afford. In closing, I want the public to understand that the hybrid plan may not be perfect for everyone. This legislation will not allow D.C. members to re-enter the old plan, and while it represents a significant step forward, each person's financial circumstances are unique, and every person planning their retirement must not rush to judgment. Thus, while employees hired after December 31st of this year will be required to join the hybrid plan beginning April 1st, 2015, current D.C. members electing to transfer will be given six-month period to make the decision best for them. This period will coincide with an educational campaign sponsored by the retirement fund to provide as much advice necessary so that all Gov-Guam employees can make the best decision regarding their individual retirement plans. With that, I invite the retirement fund to make its presentation. I want to acknowledge Speaker Joe T. Sinagasin, who's chairman of the board, Ms. Paula Bloss, the executive director, Mr. Vince Camacho, their legal counsel, Ms. Sanchez, who is a public member of the board, Mr. Cruz, who's a member of the retirement board, public member. Thank you both for devoting as many hours as you do to protect this plan for those of us in the government service, and Mr. David O'Brien, who's a D.C. member of the retirement board, and Rich. Ah, I can read. Mr. Wright, who is the actuary of the plan. And I also note, we have quite a august group of visitors today. We have former Speaker Ted Nelson in the audience, Judge Michael Bredalio, President O'Kada, President Underwood's in the back. Oh, Congressman, thank you very much for being here. Too many. It really is quite an honor to have so many esteemed individuals in the audience today. And so let me first start with the chairman of the board.
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much for all that history of what you've gone through in describing the proposed plan that we have before us. I think we have gone a long way in developing our Gov-Guam retirement system. The retirement system was based on a need to get to attract and retain qualified employees way back in 1950, and as a result, we had a so-called patent DB plan at the time with so many generous benefits, because we would need to get good qualified people on board. And during those times, as you know, remember, Mr. Speaker, you can get jobs. If you can't get a job anywhere, you can always get a job for Gov-Guam, because we had become the employment for flash resort. We were not in a competitive field. We paid the lowest salary at that time in 1950, up to probably 1956 to 57, those early days. And we had people that are staffing the Gov-Guam, they were governors, you know that, were basically people by off-islanders. We had a massive people that are in Gov-Guam, where we paid tremendous price. In fact, we discriminated our own people in order to get people on the roll so that we could qualify. And we had galore of off-island, as you know, off-island housing program. We even chartered planes just to get people to come to work for Gov-Guam. We begged qualified people in those days to work for Gov-Guam, and we paid a very premium, high premium price. So the only assurance that in the long time is to be able to get a retirement system that will be able to attract and retain good qualified people. And we were, as you remember, we were very discriminatory. We discriminate. We make sure that only our own local people qualify for the retirement plan, and only people that go into schools. We gave them very generous benefits without forgiving critical retirement system. So as a result of that, so we've gone through the last 20 years. So by 1995, we felt that we now reached that stage, that we now have good qualified employees, good people. We eliminate the off-island hires. We eliminate all these extra benefits that we provide extra people. So we invested in our own people by providing a more, we feel that we reached a point now that we can no longer afford a retirement plan that is becoming very costly. And by 1995, it was decided that it's time now to move from one end and went into what we call a D.C. plan. We went from a lifetime government guarantee program to a self-directed D.C. plan. We went into the point of let the employee stock for himself. Let him go into develop their own lifetime annuity, what have you, and we even have a third party to handle that particular phase. But over 20 years now, we now look at it, 19 years of established for the D.C. Plan, we outlined it, and the late Speaker Ben Pangolinen realized it, that it was not a benefit. It was actually prejudicial to our own employees. There was no way of being able to get qualified people. And at the same time, we're developing a welfare, a bunch of people that are getting out of Gov-Guam, going to the welfare state, transmitting from the government setup and went into the welfare stage. So the, I for one, which being the prime author of the 1995, have now lived to regret that, quite frankly, and I want to know now, want now to be able to modify that. And we went through a various options, as you outlined it, Mr. Speaker. We talked, we urged to merge with Social Security. We should go into our own, back to the old plan. So in the end, we have to, cannot continue payment on the old plan. We cannot rely more on the traditional payment, and we need to trade in, basically, the old model and look for a more efficient option. Although hybrid plan has been in place in public sector retirement since for decades, this plan design has received increased attention in recent years, and that's we are in Guam are realizing, we're not the only one in the whole public retirement community. This new focus occurs as states and territories find that closing their traditional pension plans for the future employees could increase rather than reduce costs, and that providing only a 401K type plan does not meet important retirement security, human resources, or fiscal objectives. While most states have chosen to retain their defined benefit plan by modifying required employer and employee contribution, restructuring benefits or both have also looked at the so-called hybrid plan, which we're doing now, that combine elements of traditional pension and individual account plans. The core features is to promote retirement security, mandatory contribution retirement plan, shared funding, financing with employers and employees, pool the assets, assisted by professional, which is what you have in the old plan, a benefit that cannot be outlived, and provide survivor and disability protection. We do not have that in the D.C. Plan now. A core objective of retirement plan, as you know, is to provide lifetime income insurance. We don't have that now in the D.C. We have that in the old plan. A major threat to lifetime income is known as the longevity risk, which is the danger of exhausting assets before death. A lot of our D.C. employees withdrew their assets before they even, and they're left with nothing. And that's, ensuring lifetime income can be accomplished in part by pulling longevity risk, which is the old plan, distributing the risk among many plan participants. The alternative then is an arrangement embodied in D.C. Plan in which longevity risk is borne by the individual, which we did, thought we did very well in 1995, but my guess is wrong. Most public sector plan requires some or all of the pension benefit to be paid in the form of an annuity installment over once life or retirement lifetime, rather than allowing benefits to be distributed. Wait a minute, can't get this. While we're wanting to have benefits, rather than allowing benefits to be distributed in a lump-sum manner. This not only better ensures participants will not exhaust retirement asset, we'll get them a distribution, but it also reduces costs by allowing government retirement asset to be invested as part of the trust over a longer period, which is the old plan has that. We distribute it, we develop an investment plan to diversify and be able to, and the beneficiaries are the old plan, and by funding for average longevity rather than the maximum longevity rate. Our current plan alone really raises uncomfortable question about retirement security for employees, which is why we're here. Individuals are left to navigate the perils of the investing world on their own, and could end up retiring in a down market, losing a big chunk of their nest egg. We need to think of pension not as wealth accumulation, but as an all-age poverty insurance. Therefore, the need for a DB plan that provides a predictable level of retirement income is baked one that is less generous than the old DB plan. We need this hybrid plan, not as generous as the old plan, but we need some kind of it. When the government is the plan sponsor, what you don't want is people getting to retirement with adequate assets, then looking to the government to be their safety net, welfare, the alternative. Nearly every state in the country has made changes in recent years to the retirement plan. We're not alone. We're on the same boat. A key factor in evaluating a retirement plan, as you know, is extent to which it contains the core elements known to best meet human resources and retirement policy objective of state and local government, mandatory participation, which we're going to have, shared financing, pooled investment, benefit adequacy, and lifetime benefit payout. That's the key. Somebody has to look at the end of the rainbow, do we have something coming to me? Or do I just get one lump-sum check, and then I blow it up, the next thing I go up to the Department of Public Health and apply for welfare? All you're doing is shifting government costs. These features are a proven means of delivering income security in retirement, retaining qualified workers who perform essential public service. That's the key. We want to be able to attract and retain qualified. No employee is going to stick around if he knows at the end of the rainbow, he got nothing. And we saw that over the last day of our existence, the government. We developed that. So we have come a long way in providing, we need to provide an important source of economic stability to every government employee. We need to do that. If there's any legacy that we're going to do, we need to reverse that. We need to provide some kind of lifetime security to our employees. Otherwise, you might as well privatize the entire government of Guam. You don't need any employees. You might as well privatize everything, as long as you need to give employees, as long as you need to provide qualified employees, and that's a legacy that we all have to do. Over the last term that I went through, I give you the benefit of my experience, I've gone through that. I lived to regret, quite frankly, why we went through the 1995 D.C. Plan without giving them any kind of a security at the end of the rainbow. And 19 years of experience have proven that I was wrong. And that's, Mr. Chairman, I let these people to explain the ramifications, the technical things that we need to change. We need to reverse what we have now. We owe it to them. We owe it to employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. It takes a great man to be able to admit that we had done something that we shouldn't have done, and I appreciate the fact that you did that. Paul, are you going to speak, or Vince?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow speakers. I'm just going to sort of set the groundwork as to how we came to be where we are today. And if you refer back to public law 23-42, that it created the D.C. Plan back in 1995, one of the provisos in that legislation itself required the government of Guam, the policymakers, the retirement fund board, to assess benefit levels and retirement policies and review those to ensure that they're adjusted in order to adjust specific inequities, excessiveness, and desired policy objectives. The board notes that an extensive and collaborative effort pursuant to public law 23-42 was undertaken on March 11, 2010. This was done at a summit held at the Sheraton Hotel, which included representatives from the legislature, the administration, government agency employers, the attorney general's office, the Office of Public Accountability, the retirement fund, and their legal counsel, their actuary, as well as their financial advisor. The board at this time believes, after four years of hard work and after iteration after iteration of plans, I think we started out with 16 different proposed types of plan, including going back to the DB plan, or including going into Social Security, which the other board members will talk to, and the cost for that. But at this time, the board presents that their position is this hybrid plan before you today, Bill 394, ideally balances the government's overall long-term budgetary needs with its obligations to the active and retired government employees and their survivors. Therefore, the Board of Trustees supports the enactment of the new hybrid plan to balance, to help you, the government policymakers, to balance those government goals. With that being said, at that hearing or at that summit, all of these people were at the table. Some of you may have been there as well. Senator Ben took the lead on this and has constantly insisted that the board get something done. There was actually a bill presented in 2012, and nothing happened to that bill. We worked in the last two years to actually come up with the bill before you, and the reason why there was a lot of iterations going back and forth, because they wanted to make sure that the inequities were addressed. And we believe at this time that it passes legal muster, and we hope you would support the bill as well. I will now turn it over to board member Lena Leon-Guerrero to discuss the provisions of the hybrid plan.
Thank you, Vince. My name is Lena Leon-Guerrero. I am a trustee with the Government of Guam Retirement Fund. I also serve on the Members and Benefits Committee, and I drew the short straw and get to present the board's findings and recommendations in full support of 394, the hybrid plan. I apologize that we don't have the PowerPoint presentation on the screen, but I think you have the presentation and the slides in front of you. Across the nation, there's a lot of talk about retirement plans. Across sectors, those retirement plan fundamentals remain the same, whether it's the private sector or the public sector. We're talking about adequate funding from employers or plan sponsors. In our case, that's the government of Guam, plus employee contributions and retirement savings. When pooled together and invested over time, those can yield a lifetime benefit that will survive retirement. Employees will not outlive their retirement savings. Nationally, we're looking at all sorts of retirement plans. Social Security is facing challenges of its own with regards to funding, with regards to when benefits are going to be issued. Those of us that might get a government pension need to be aware that there is a windfall provision. Social Security benefits will be reduced to offset government pensions that are received. Defined benefit plans, those are the most common types of plans used in Defined benefit plans, those are the most common types of plans used in the public pension. They are pay-as-you-go plans. So one of the things that the Board of Trustees has been very certain about is that every benefit that we offer, we have to pay for. Defined contribution plans, those arose, as Chairman Sinagastin had pointed out, over the last 20 years. They're not bad plans in and of themselves. Our concern is whether or not the savings balance at the end of the work time is sufficient to last a retirement. So hybrid plans have become much more popular now, and everybody is looking at different ways for employees and employers to share the responsibility to pool resources and invest in the workforce retirement security. That's where we're at today. And the Board of Trustees has turned to our advisors, we've turned to the legislators, we've turned to administration, we sought the counsel of outside. We know that there are members in the community who are very interested in this issue and have spoken to our trustees on an individual basis. Everybody agrees that there's a time, this is the time for us to look at how we can protect our government of Guam employees and provide retirement security for them. So the hybrid plan in and of itself is an alternate retirement plan. It is a hybrid by definition, right? We combine two different kinds of components. We combine the defined benefit component as well as a defined contribution component. That in and of itself makes it a hybrid. We ask employees of the government of Guam to invest in this plan, and we ask the government of Guam to pay their share. And together, that's an affordable retirement plan that we believe will last a lifetime. This will be mandatory for all new employees in 2015. It will be optional for current DC members. Bill 394 creates this hybrid plan. And why do we want to replace the DC plan? As we said, we're concerned about the savings balances. Chairman Sinagastin pointed to $40,000 balances that can grow over time, but at the end of the day, will it be enough to suffice during retirement? DC members may be forced to work longer and forego retirement, or on the off chance that they do retire, they may deplete their savings and be forced to seek public pension, public assistance, and welfare. Retirement plans need to last a lifetime. The hybrid goals are to provide a reasonable lifetime benefit for government of Guam employees with an affordable investment. We're going to ask employees of the government of Guam to invest 9.5% of their salary into a defined benefit and 1% into deferred compensation. The benefit that they'll receive in the end is 1.75% for every year of service, based on the three, the average of the three highest salaries that they've earned during their time in the government. For the government of Guam, we look to make this plan cost neutral. And we look to increase the retirement fund security ratio. For the community, the plan will also be, the benefit that they'll yield is not only that the plan will remain cost neutral, we can avoid some of those social impacts for retirees who may end up on public assistance. I wish we did have the slide, if you have in front of you, Slide 6 in the packet, that's for the presentation called the Hybrid Plan. And again, I wish we did have it on the board for everybody to see. The Board of Trustees looked at different ways, different scenarios to consider how best to achieve our goal. As Vince pointed out, one of the first things we looked at was social security. We wanted to see whether or not social security would be a viable option for our government employees. And what we looked at when we considered all these options were three things. One was cost, both the employer cost for Gov Guam and the employee. We looked at the benefit that the employees would receive at the end of their work, and we also looked at the impact to the government of Guam contribution rate. Now, some people may ask, what's the difference between cost and the government of Guam contribution rate? When we talk about the cost, we're talking about per individual, per individual, per pay period. So it's sort of easy to see if we think about the defined contribution plan, right? It's a 5% for the government, 5% for the employee. That's the cost of the DC plan. But the government contribution rate, that includes a lot more than the cost. The government of Guam contribution rate also includes the debt that the government of Guam owes the retirement fund trust. Because years ago, the government of Guam enhanced benefits, but didn't pay for those benefits at that time. And as I said earlier, defined benefit plans or pay as you go. For every benefit you offer, you have to pay. In addition to that, there was a period of time where the government of Guam did not make their employer contributions. So the fund had to pick up those contributions. There's a cost to that, and that is the debt that the government of Guam owes to the employees' trust fund. And the policymakers have decided that they're going to pay that out over time as a percent of payroll. So rather than to make lump sum payments, they spread it out over everybody's payroll, they pay it off in 26 pay periods, and they pay it off over years. So that's the government contribution rate. It includes not just the cost, but the debt that the government owes the employees' trust fund. So when we look at the DC plan, it's 5% for the employer, 5% for the employee. If I was an employee who earns $40,000, every pay period, my contribution is $76.92. At the end of 30 years, I can buy an annuity under the DC plan and get an annuity of $1,600 a month. That's $20,000 a year. I'm not a spendthrift, but I can tell you that would be a challenge for me to live on $20,000 a year in retirement. So we looked at social security. Social Security is 6.2% for the employer, 6.2% for the employee. My per pay period contribution would go from $76 to $95. Not too big an increase, but my benefit would certainly increase to $2,400 a month. I'd get $30,000 a month. But what does it do to the retirement funds, I'm sorry, what does it do to the government's contribution rate? It increases it from 29% to 30%. The other thing that concerns the board with regards to social security is it's for new members. It still won't address the issue that we have for current DC members whose balances may not be sufficient when they retire. We could combine social security with a DC component, which we talked about. So we'd look at 5% DC component and a 6% social security. Again, a larger contribution, the benefit that we would yield, $4,100 a month. The more money we put into, invest into our retirement, the more money we're going to benefit from. But what does that do to the government of Guam contribution rate? It bumps it up another 3%. Now the contribution rate is 33.8%. So the Board of Trustees is concerned about that. We look at the cost, we look at the benefit, we look at the overall cost of the government. The hybrid plan has a government cost of 1.8%, and then we ask our employees to pay 10.5% of their salary. So that's a little bit more than double of what they're paying now for their retirement. So my per pay period will jump from $76.92 to $161, a little less than $100. But what will I get in return for that? $3,700 in a monthly annuity, $45,000 a year. And what does it do to the government of Guam's retirement contribution rate? It reduces it. So these are the things that we look at, and when you get a chance to take a look at this table on Slide 6, we'll ask you to look at it across these scenarios, to look at the cost, to look at the benefit, to look at the impact on the government of Guam contribution rate. Some of the other considerations that we look at, just to give you a brief overview, just in terms of some of the features, in terms of a lifetime benefit, the current DC plan does not offer that lifetime benefit. Social Security does, the hybrid plan would. For professional management, Chairman Sinagastin said, you know, DC members are investing, are managing their own investments. Under the hybrid plan, under social security, there will be professional management. The DC plan and the hybrid plan are both pre-taxed. They're designed to be pre-taxed. And both the DC plan and the hybrid plan have the portability feature as well. When all is said and done, the Board of Trustees' primary concern is the government and Guam employees and protecting the integrity of the employees' trust fund. When we ask, when we're asked if DC members can afford to retire, we're not confident that their savings balances will allow for that. We urge you to support and pass Bill 394 and the hybrid plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. And so thank you very much for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Any of the board members, you, we're just going straight down, you're not speaking, okay.
Next up is going to, Mr. Vice Speaker, we've asked Rich to make a presentation to go through the more specifics of the plan, benefits and the costs.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Wright, please.
Good evening. I was asked to review the provisions of the hybrid plan and then go through, work through a few or three examples, and then summarize the costs, and then I'll turn it back over to Jerry. And I do have a presentation, so you can follow along on screen. So just to review some of the things that people have already discussed, the eligibility for the hybrid plan would be required for new employees starting next year, and then optional for current employees in the defined contribution system. Former employees who were members of the defined contribution system could be eligible in the hybrid if they're rehired and they elect to join the hybrid. There would be a one-time opportunity for those members to elect to join the hybrid. As Senator Cruz said, their next year for current employees, the election period would run from April 1 through September 30. Any employees that are rehired would have a 30-day window after reemployment to be able to elect to join the hybrid plan. Who is not eligible for the hybrid? Well, current employees in the DB plan, they would stay in the DB plan, they would not be in the hybrid plan. Any employees that are retired from the DB plan or the DC plan would not be eligible for the hybrid plan if they come back to work. Former employees who were originally in the DB plan and they have not yet retired and they have not withdrawn their DB contributions, they would continue to get the DB benefit that they earned previously. And any other employees that do not return to employment after next year, any former employees, would not be eligible in the hybrid plan. They would stay in whatever plan they were in previously. So what is the hybrid plan? As people have said before, it's a combination of DB and 457 benefits. The DB portion provides a monthly benefit at retirement. It's designed to be a floor benefit. It's not going to replace 100% of someone's income, so it's, that's where the 457 plan comes in. The 457 plan, it's a DC-type plan, accumulates contributions into an account which earns investment earnings, and that can be paid at retirement. The DB part of the hybrid plan provides a formula of 1.75% of average salary times the years of service. And so, for example, after 40 years of service, that would provide a benefit of 70% of the average salary. The average salary is over a three-year period and excludes non-base pay. The benefit is paid upon retirement, on or after age 65, that's how to get the full benefits. There are reduced benefits available starting at age 55, as long as the member has 25 years of service. The DB, or the hybrid plan DB portion provides a disability benefit and also survivor and child benefits after retirement. The retirement benefits are incrementally increased after retirement to help protect against inflation. The same increments that apply to the DB plan also apply to the hybrid. The 457 benefit is, members must contribute 1% of pay into that plan, and members may contribute more, and they'll be encouraged to contribute more up to the plan's maximum. As I said, the account balance grows with contributions and investment earnings, and then it's available at retirement. Hybrid members will pay 9.5% of their pay towards the defined benefit and 1% to the 457. And then DC members that who elect to transfer to the hybrid plan must transfer their DC account balance to the hybrid plan. Now, someone's DC account balance consists of two parts, one due to employer contributions and one due to employee contributions. The employer contributions will be, that balance will be 100% transferred over. The one exception is for former members in the DB plan who transferred to the DC plan in the mid 1990s. Some of those members, they received a transfer incentive contribution as an incentive to transfer to the DC plan. They would be able to keep that balance attributed to those contributions. The employee contribution account would transfer over, but it's limited to the actuarial cost of their past service. So employees that have an employee balance that's more than the actuarial cost would be able to keep that excess portion. And we did an analysis, and of the approximately 8,000 employees in the DC system, we figure about 5,000 would have an excess account balance. Okay, I'll work through a few benefit comparisons. First is for new employee would start next year, and let's say they're age 35 now, and they would retire 30 years from now at age 65. Assume their starting salary is $40,000. After 30 years of service, we project that their salary at retirement would grow to $81,000. So for this individual, if they were in the DC plan, we would project that their DC account balance would grow to $364,000 after 30 years of service and then be there at retirement. If that's converted to an annuity, we estimate that the monthly annuity for that individual would be $1,651. There'd be no social security benefit, and so their monthly benefit, we estimate under the DC system, would be $1,651. Under social security, if they weren't not in the DC and they were instead in social security, we predict that their social security benefit 30 years from now would be $2,455, assuming the current level of social security benefits. Now, social security is projected to run out of money in less than 30 years, so either the benefits have to be reduced or the taxes will be increased. So it's hard to say what the social security benefit would be in the future, but this is just based on the current law. Under the hybrid system, there'd be two sources of benefits. One is from the 457 account. So this individual, after 30 years of service, paying 1% of their pay into the 457 account, that account balance would grow to $36,469 after 30 years. If that gets converted to an annuity, we estimate that would be, provide a monthly benefit of $165. The hybrid formula would be 1.75% times 30 years, times their average salary, would be $3,582. And so that's a benefit of $3,747. Work through another example, this time with a member that's currently in the DC plan. Let's just say they're age 45 now, and they have 10 years of service. And let's say 20, they retire at age 65, 20 years from now, after a total of 30 years of service. The current salary, $51,000, and after 20 years, that would grow to $81,000. So first, what happens at the transition? Well, they, we estimate that they would have a current balance in the employer, due to the employer contributions in the DC plan, their balance would be $28,500, and all of that would get transferred to the hybrid plan. On their DC, on DC employee account balance, $28,500, we estimate that their actuarial cost would be $24,000, and so they would have an excess of $4,500 that would stay in their DC account or be transferred into the 457, and that could grow to retirement. So then at retirement, if that member stayed in the DC plan, we would estimate that their balance would grow to $364,000. balance would grow to $364,000 and then be able to provide an annuity of $1,651. Now, if instead, if that member went into social security, the social security benefit in this case, we predict would be $2,266. But that's based on 30 years of social security service. So the member's 45 now and they moved into social security, they would only have 20, actually 20 years remaining, so they would need to have another 10 years of previous employment that provided social security benefits to get the $2,266. If they did not have that, their social security benefit, based on 20 years of service, would be less. We estimate $1,740 in that case. Plus, those benefits could be reduced due to the windfall elimination provision, the coordination of social security benefits with public plan benefits. On the hybrid side, their 457 account balance, the contribution of 1% per year for 20 years would grow to $21,295. The, that $4,500 from their excess DC account would grow to $11,940. We convert those to annuities and we add in the hybrid benefit. In this case, that member could get a hybrid benefit of $3,732. So this corresponds with Lena, what Lena said earlier, is there's a big increase in this person's benefit. So there'd be an incentive for this member to transfer from the DC plan to the hybrid plan. They have to pay more for the hybrid plan, but they are getting a substantially higher Now, the last example's a little more complicated. This is someone who's age 60 now. They have 25 years of combined DB and DC service. So they were originally in the DB plan and then they transferred to the DC plan in 1995. And let's say this member received a distribution from the DC plan back in 2,000 to $40,000. Maybe they left employment, took their employee balance and then they were re-employed, but they have a prior distribution. So this example, this employee retires at age 65 with 30 years. Their current salary's $74,000 and their projected salary at retirement's $81,000. So at the transition, now they may have their employer account in the DC plan equal to $125,000. $100,000 would be transferred to the hybrid and the remaining balance of $25,000, that's due to that transfer incentive balance. So they transferred from the DB to the DC in the mid-1990s. That amount stays with them, they're able to keep that. On the DC, on the employee account side, they took the $40,000 distribution, so their DC employee account balance is much less. All of that gets transferred to the hybrid plan. So in this example, from the DC plan, we predict their DC account would grow to $281,000. That's less than the prior examples because this employee withdrew money from their DC, the $40,000. And so because of that, their monthly benefit would be less, $1,0275 from the DC plan. Social security, if they had 30 years of service, would be $2,079. Now, if, it would be difficult for them to get 30 years of service if they're already age 60. So if they were to actually transfer from the DC plan to social security and worked five years in social security, their social security benefit would be zero because they wouldn't have enough years to qualify for it. So that's one of the issues with moving to a social security program, is that members that don't have any prior social security service for 10 years, they're not going to get anything from social security. In this example, the hybrid 457 account balance, five years at 1% contributions would grow to $4,000. That transfer incentive balance of $25,000 would grow to $31,000. We convert those to annuities and add in their hybrid benefit, their total monthly benefit, $2,552. Now, in this case, because that member withdrew the $40,000 from their DC account, their hybrid service gets cut back. For this example, we assume that only 20 of the actual 30 years that they had would be available in the hybrid plan because of that distribution. Now, they would have an opportunity to repay that $40,000 withdrawal they had with interest and if they did that, they'd be able to restore all of their years of service. So for members that had a prior distribution, that'll be important to look at whether to repay any past distributions to get their service, their full service. So now I'll go through some cost comparisons and this kind of follows what Lena had said already. But on the DC plan, the costs per year of service, it's 5% for the employer, 5% for the employee, a total of 10%. For social security, the employer would pay 6.2%. The employee also pays 6.2%, so for a total of 12.4%. Now, those are limited to the social security taxable wage base, which is about $120,000. And nearly all of the DC members make less than, make less than that. On the hybrid side, the employer portion for one year of service, on a going-forward basis, is 1.8%. And then the employee would pay 10.5%, which is 9.5% to the DB portion and 1% to the 457. Now, the 1.8% for the employer paid, that's just for one year of service. That does not account for any of the transition costs from the current DC members coming in. We estimate that would be about 2.9% of payroll. So during the transition period, the employer is paying a little bit more than that, but still less than the DC plan. Looking at the total employer costs, including the current DB plan and dividing everything by total payroll, this bottom chart shows where the components of the costs are coming from. So on the current DC plan, the employer's paying 5% for the DC employees, but there's no DC costs for the DB employees. And so if you divide the DC costs by total payroll, including both DB and DC payroll, you're actually coming up with a 3.7% cost for the DC plan as a percentage of the entire GovGuam payroll. The DB normal cost, the current DB, is 2.05%. Again, that's just the DB members' costs dividing by, for one year's service, dividing by all payroll. And then the DB unfunded liability cost, that's the big number, 24%. And the buildup of those three components equals the current employer cost for the retirement systems, 29.85%. Now, if we convert that to a social security-type benefit, there'd be no cost for DC. The social security cost would be 4.03% as a percentage of total payroll. It's not 6.2% because you still have the DB members that are not, would not be in social security. So it's 4.03% plus 2% for the DB members and then you still have the unfunded liability costs. So moving to a social security program, the total employer cost, we estimate would be 30.17% versus the current 29.85. And then looking at the hybrid costs, there'd be no, assuming everyone transfers to the hybrid, there'd be no DC costs, no social security costs. The DB normal cost would go up to 3.34%. The unfunded liability payment would go up somewhat because of the transition costs from members coming in to the hybrid plan. But overall, the total employer cost would go down to 29.3%. So we think that the actual hybrid cost will depend on how, which members transfer over, but we think that they'll be, it's, we tried to design the plan so that it's cost-neutral. And that's all I have in my presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr., or good evening, Mr. Vice Speaker and members of the legislature. I had the opportunity to talk to Maggie Robowski today, who's the Retirement Fund's Investment Advisor. And while she's not here tonight, I thought I would be able to go over with you the key points that we talked about because I think they're important to understand from how the Retirement Fund Investment Advisor would look at the various plans, the DB, the DC and the hybrid and social security. I think, yeah, I want to use. I think her, and I'm not meaning to talk for Maggie, I'm just talking about how the, because she's not here. But I think I can accurately reflect the nature of our conversation. Almost the first thing that she wanted to convey is that despite all the comments to the contrary, that a DB plan is not necessarily a bad thing. A DB plan, in fact, in her view, is a cheaper way to fund retirement, everything else being equal. And she makes that point several reasons. One, a DB, a DB plan earns higher investment earnings than DC accounts. And the reason for that is several-fold. One, a DC, a DB plan has a longer investment horizon. It's not like an individual in a DC account with a limited horizon associated with their lifespan, so they're making decisions in perpetuity. And what that means is that there's a slightly higher tolerance for risk. And if you know investments, you know that if you take risks, the investments' results are higher. That's typically the payoff to taking risks in investments. And there's actually a national study of DB plans that show that they generate about 2.5% higher returns than DC accounts. And what that means is that's a very important statistic because what that means is over 30 years, you basically can double the return to the DB plan versus a DC plan. And that's important because it's that investment, the contributions plus the earnings in the end, that are going to fund your plan. Also, a DB plan has a, is a cheaper way to fund retirement because the fees are less. So for example, fees for a DC plan average about 0.78% of the assets. DB plans average about 0.58%. So that's a fair amount of difference that contribute to higher plans, especially over 25 to 30 years. So her point there again is DB plans aren't necessarily bad, they're a good way to fund retirement. Second thing she wanted to talk about was the DC plan experience. And what she's saying is, is that most DC participants, they have options in which to invest, but options don't equate to offering solutions. And one of the reasons for that is, is as their own investment managers, DC participants earn much lower returns and they take almost all of the retirement risk. Some of that's been talked about tonight. There's the risk of the market. So you have people who aren't professionals out there investing their money. We talked about the longevity risk. Will I be able to invest enough to have enough to retire for my lifetime? And that's a real issue. Does that mean I go conservative? Does that mean I take the risk so I have enough? How should I play that game as an individual investor? There's interest rate risk. What do I do? How do I invest today, knowing that in the future, everybody's talking about interest rates going up? What kind of decisions do I make? What does that mean for investing in bonds? What does that mean for the way I allocate the investments that I have? And then, of course, there's a real big issue. Everybody talks about risk before the retire and how people who are managing their accounts and trying to accumulate money. But imagine how those risks must look to someone who's already retired, getting along in age and still forced to manage their investment accounts. And I think that one of the key points she wanted to make there is that in a DB plan, the fund takes the risks and because those risks can be professionally managed, those investments can be professionally made. And acting as your own chief investment officer, she feels is a real challenge that it results in lower returns and higher risks. She asked the question, or we talked about the issue of, how does a DB plan become unaffordable? So her point was, DB plans aren't necessarily bad, but they become bad. How come? Well, she points to history. She says, "In the 1990s, an average pension plan was fully funded. Some were funded even over 100%." This encouraged, what that did was it encouraged many initiatives to increase benefits. And so, as those benefits increased without any additional contributions, those DB plans became unaffordable. They couldn't fund the benefits that they created. In addition to that, you add that situation of added benefits that aren't paid for to three stock market crises during that same time period. And I think we know 2008, 2001 were a couple of those crises. You put those things together, the financial crises together with the increased benefits which aren't paid for, and you have a huge unfunded liability for many retirement plans. And her message there is, but DB plans do not have to be mismanaged and can be kept affordable. What you need is disciplined funding, so the contribution rate is met each year, and you need to create the level of benefits that you can afford. And I think that's what our hybrid plan is designed to do, both of those things. Her last discussion, the topic we talked about, was social security. In her view there is, social security's certainly not a panacea. You know, it's facing formidable challenges ahead. It's a pay-as-you-go system, there's no trust fund reserved, and the next generation, already we're seeing that they're beginning to support the prior generation. She's saying reform is inevitable. By 2033, it's expected that social security tax collection will not be sufficient to cover the benefits due to the negative demographic trends, meaning my generation versus the people in Generation X and Y and Z and whatever. So the question she's asking is, what are they going to do? Push back the retirement age, raise social security taxes or do other reforms? Something has to happen in social security. She also mentions the point, it's no slam dunk that we'll get social security here or wonder what terms we'll be able to get social security. And as both Lena and Rich and the chairman have mentioned, there's the issue of the windfall elimination provision and that's effect when you put it together with a government pension plan. So those are, Mr. Vice Speaker, the topics that we discussed that related to this conversation tonight.
Thank you very much for covering that for us. Mr. Cruz, did you wish to speak to, no? Did you, that's all? Okay. Madam Speaker, and you, we'll just go, we'll start with seniority. Well, no, you have the senior position, the speaker.
Okay.
By office.
Since you put it back.
I'm older than you are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was following very closely, of course, with your comparisons and, and just looking at the numbers, of course, the DC is 5% for the employer, 5% for the employee, but the hybrid now, they're, actually what we're doing, we're putting the cost now to, the burden is on the employee now to come up with the additional now 5%, 5.5%. And of course, the government, we've lowered the government's cost of 1.8. And of course, when you compare that, we're going to say, yes, we're going to save the government money, but my concern is the employee now, that the employee now will be paying a lot more. And so is that then basically true? That's just very simple for me, that I'm trying to understand this. So that's correct, right? I mean, not later on, all the calculations that you did, but initially.
Your numbers are correct, Madam Speaker.
But initially, when the employee looks at his or her check, they're going to see then that it then that it has basically doubled for them.
You know, as a DC rep of the people over at the university, this is one of the questions I get. Boy, I'm going to pay a lot more. And why is that? The government's going to pay a lot less. And is that equitable? Is that fair?
And, and I know, and even the figure that you use of $40,000, is that the lowest salary in the government of Guam? I mean, the more realistic figure to look at really for those individuals way down there at the entry level is probably a truer picture that we need to see as well for these individuals. I mean, you know, I had spoken to Speaker Joty earlier, and his concern, of course, was, you know, what are we setting up our people for in the future to enter a welfare plan, so to speak, because they aren't, you know, going to have enough to retire. But then, at the very early set, you know, of coming into the government, because not everybody's going to start out at $40,000, we're going to have some. What's the lowest? $28, maybe, maybe, I might be wrong, $28,000? What would that look like for their paycheck that they have to pay now 10.5%? So I'm, you know, and, and I need to work with you guys on how you came up with ultimately the very end, how much they're going to get. And I'm concerned, well, no, I'm concerned about that. The, the other question is, there was an article in the newspaper that the government's unfunded liability was anywhere between $1.3 to $1.4 billion, and that's the correct figure, right? Now, will this hybrid plan somehow increase the unfunded liability?
It, it depends. If, if members transfer from the DC system to the hybrid plan, they're transferring their account balance over. In some cases, that account balance will be more than enough to pay for their liability under the hybrid plan. So for those people, there is no increase in the unfunded liability. However, there are some people whose account balance is going to be less than their liability under the hybrid, and that will create an unfunded liability. If we were to transfer everybody, if everybody were to transfer over, the unfunded liability would increase by about $100 million. But actually, the security ratio of the fund would increase because the benefits, the assets that are coming over with their liability is a higher percentage of funding than what's currently in the DB plan. So it would add to the unfunded liability, but the percent funded for the overall plan would actually increase by a few percentage points.
But, I mean, you're saying for the individual, but what ultimately is the impact for taxpayers overall, the government? What would that unfunded liability be today and in the future?
So even without the hybrid plan, the unfunded liability, like you said, is about $1.4 billion. That's projected to be eliminated in 17 years. The, the plan is to pay that off over 17 years, and that the government has been doing that. With the hybrid plan, the unfunded liability, if all the members transfer over, the unfunded liability would increase by about $100 million, so it would go up to $1.5 billion. But the payment towards that would actually decline, or the, the overall government of Guam's contribution to the retirement system would decline from 29.85% of payroll to 29.3%. And the unfunded liability would still be paid off by 2031. So there is a, a short-term increase in the unfunded liability, but it does get paid off over time, and it actually reduces costs.
And so, are we then, as a government, should itemize separately then a, a percentage, 26% then of unfunded liability payment, like you say, by the year 2031? You know, just a, a separate itemize, budget item, to pay that down? And that, of course, comes from, of course, all the taxpayers?
Right, yeah, that's, that's how it's currently working, and it would continue to work like that.
Okay. Now, you, you mentioned earlier, of course, that the DB plan, that was saying that it's cheaper primarily because there's this long-term investment and high tolerance, you know, to investment risk. What is the rate of return that our government now requires for investments and, you know, to ensure that the money will be available to, to pay out the benefits? You know what that percentage is?
7% is the target investment return.
Okay, so 7%. And so if that is 7%, and then if the employees themselves on the DC plan, who would decide, of course, what level of risk they want to, to invest, what would that interest be? Do you know? You have any idea? Would it be at the same as the government at 7% with the DB plan?
Well, it'd vary by individual depending on how they invest their, their assets. If they invest in, in the 100% in the stock market, there'll be years where they had very good returns and years they had very bad returns. I think the, the study that the investment consultant referenced indicated that the average DC return was 2.5% lower than the average DB return. So if the DB is assuming 7% as a target, the employees could, on average, probably earn 4.5%.
So you don't think that anyone in the DC plan could even hypothetically get, let's say, 6%?
It's possible, it's possible. It's, depends on their level of risk, if they invest well in the stock market and they, the stock market does well. It's possible they could, but it's, it's up to the individual to manage their investments in that case. If somebody chooses not to invest in, in the stock market, they're not going to earn 6%.
You know, and is there any way then in which the government or the retirement could, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking this question because I'm not sure that, granted that there's the high-risk, you know, plan that you could take, and moderate and low-risk, maybe mutual funds, in which then these employees can be assisted to, maybe not at the 7% of the government right now for the DB plan, but something more conservative, you know, a rate of return for the DC employees so that then they would realize ultimately then again, very similar to the comparison that you did, and I, you know, I just kind of did something myself trying to, to look at, you know, the, using, of course, say, $40,000 and starting even at age 21, retiring at, after 45 years, or 65 years of age. And the lifetime investment with their 5%, even a 5% annual withdrawal would be at $45,000. So, I mean, I, I think, I, I'm not sure whether it's the percentage that increase that they would get rather from, you know, their investment, or that that's the biggest factor here? And, or is it, or could it be where the employer cost maybe could still remain at, at 5% where the DC plan is and allow the employee to increase, you know, their contribution? And would that then make them, what's the word I'm trying to find? You know, make him whole, I suppose, so that they'll be able to get a lifetime, you know, a payout when they retire? By maintaining what the government's contribution is, but then allowing the employees to, to go up to the 10.5%?
Madam Speaker, if I may respond to that. That currently exists through the 457 plan. So right now-
Where they, no, because it says here 5% for the employer and 5% for the employee.
That's just the DC plan, but-
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm talking about, the DC plan, yeah.
The current existing plans that exist today with the government of Guam is the DC plan and the 457. The 457 plan is a voluntary plan that exists today that will allow all GovGuam employees, including defined benefit plan members, to invest on top of either the DB and/or the DC. So that, that provision is provided today through the 457 plan.
No, but, you're right, but what I'm saying is making it mandatory, like the way you're saying this with the hybrid, that the 10.5 will be mandatory.
Yes, you can.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, making it mandatory. And have you, because you, you mentioned, Lena, that you've looked at so many different scenarios. Have you looked at this scenario as well?
They have. The problem with that is it doesn't deal with the longevity risk, and it doesn't deal with the fact that you have individuals who have to manage their own account. So the component of having someone self-manage their account versus a DB hiring an investment manager to get that 7% rate of return, that's the risk that we're trying to shift. And that's why there's an additional cost. Because yes, the GovGuam has to bear that, but the, the risk now shifts.
But my understanding as well is that the reason why these individuals are having such a difficult time and are not seeing the amounts, of course, that they would like to have that lifetime retirement pension is because there's been so many loopholes in allowing individuals to withdraw for whatever. I mean, it's like their emergency, you know, cash account that for anything, for trips, you know, that they need to take, granted for funerals, you know, that's, you know, important, know that. But some of these you need to plug and just say, you just can't do this because it's not supposed to be, it's supposed to be a lifetime plan and not for short term.
That's correct.
And we're not helping at all when we, when we allow that. So, and, and I think that that's part of the problem. And I'm wondering whether, you know, why is it that we're not getting to the root of the problem, you know, with even the current, I mean, how do we fix the DC plan without having to go and change everything again?
I think that's a very valid point, Madam Speaker. But just so that you know, the, the board has amended the plan to cut some of those loopholes under the hardship provision. For instance, you, you used to be able to get a hardship provision once a year. That's no longer the case. In some, in some scenarios, you can only do it once in your lifetime now. So the board has been actively looking at ways to help those individuals, not necessarily. But then you also have the other loophole. And the other loophole is quit Friday, come back to work Monday. All you need is a termination action to withdraw your money. So if you can't do it through the hardship provision, and that happened in the DB plan too, so it exists, no matter what plan you have, you're going to have someone quit Friday, pull their money out, come back to work on Monday.
So, but, so you're saying then that when that happens now and taking, of course, you know, and I, I understand, Mr. Speaker is such a compassionate, you know, person, wanting to, to help everyone, we all do too. We don't want our, our people to be in the welfare role. But if they take that route, like you say, retire, I mean, quit Friday and come back in again on Monday, and that's our fault again because we allow them to come right back without maybe saying, no, you have to stay out maybe for this long, or once you start to withdraw, you can't, you know, come back and can't pay back? I mean, I don't have all the answers, of course, and that's why I'm asking all of these questions. I mean, all of you here have looked into this much longer, you know? But are we then going to be responsible then now to say, you know, I'm sorry, we're going to hold your hand, you can't do this, you must do this? I, I don't know what the answers are. I just know that, and, and from what you've said is that, unless I'm wrong, is that by increasing, of course, the contribution, at least I'm thinking, that the more you increase your, your contribution, then you're providing a better chance, of course, of having more at retirement. So if you put less, of course, you're going to get less.
Well, I mean, put it this way, if, if the hybrid plan goes into effect, there's no law right now or regulation saying that someone in the hybrid plan after five years won't quit on a Friday, take out their money, and come back on a, on a Monday. So that issue is besides, and we can't address every single iteration when we're designing the plan. What we want to look at is the average, the average GovGuam employee. And that's why when you asked about the $40,000, where that number came from, that's the average salary in GovGuam right now. Take, just the average, so it's not taking, it's taking into account both the higher and the lower. So when we look at these things and we start putting plan provisions together, the, we look at averages. We can't look at every specific individual because if we do, we're not going to be perfect. The plan is not intended to be a perfect plan to address all the issues, but it is intended to provide that floor benefit. It's a balance of a DB plan and a DC plan, which allows, it brings the balance together and assess the risks across the board, both with the government as well as with the employee.
Okay. And I'll have somebody else ask other questions, but thank you, I'll formulate more again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, based on some of those same lines, I think for me, as I support the intent and really appreciate this bill, knowing that I'm under the old plan of the DB plan, the old, old plan, or the old new plan, because I need to do the 2530 and not the 2025, I just heard a story where a constituent came crying to me because her husband worked at the government of Guam for many years, was one of those unfortunate that transferred from the DB plan to the DC plan, and he does, just died recently, the husband, and she got nothing. She got nothing because she didn't know that he made that, I guess, that one-time hardship because he had a massive heart attack, had to pay for the medical bills, and now she's got nothing. I didn't even know if she got the $10,000. But for me, as I'm looking at this, and I'm seeing the hybrid component and, and looking at the numbers based on the averages, based on the DC, the social security, and this hybrid plan, I appreciate the amounts going to be afforded to the, to the, to the employee. But the 10.5% versus equal across the board for social security, the, the DB plan, the DC plan, on the 50/50 share, why is it so unbalanced now?
And that's a very good question. You have to go back to the goals that were set in establishing the hybrid plan. The goals are three-point, and that is to provide a floor benefit to the GovGuam employee, provide a cost-neutral plan to the government of Guam, as well as to provide a cost-neutral as much as possible to the taxpayers of Guam. And when you start looking at that, every, and you know, if you look at all the charts in the past, every benefit, whether it's, it comes with a cost. And like I said, we've looked at benefits as high as increasing 2%, and, you know-
So we're paying for best, best benefits, I mean-
Well, that's a 20, the big 24.9%. That's a sunk cost. That cost has to be paid whether you do DB, DC, hybrid, whatever. And that's, and that's, I think, the biggest concern for the policymakers, is how do we afford, continue paying that till 2031 at the same time providing an addition, this hybrid plan? And that was the, the goal that we set and in working with Speaker Ben. And one of the big provisions in this plan that didn't exist before was the ability for someone who, as the speaker alluded to earlier, let's say someone did very well in the DC plan, and their account balance is well above their actuarial calculation for the years of service. Well, that individual in the prior iterations had to transfer the entire account balance. And in essence, that person was funding those people with lower account balances. Well, he saw that as an inequity to those people who did well in the DC plan and did take, did take the time to invest their money. And so he said, no, we have to address those individuals as well. And those individuals will be allowed to transfer the years of service up to the actuarial valuation of the years of service. So those are the types of things that we- So those are the types of things that we actually went through in this entire process, considering groups of people, not just individuals. And unfortunately, the Board can't address every specific individual case.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of questions. I'm trying to make sure I organize it in a way that allows it to kind of compound, because compounding is the eighth wonder of the world. My first question was previously answered with regard to what the unfunded liability of the retirement fund is, and that's $1.4 billion. Before I get into the sub-questions to that, for the old plan, what was the employee and the employer contribution rate?
Right now, it's nine and a half, but over the years, it started out with 6.5 and gradually increased over time to nine and a half.
So right now, it's 9.5%?
Correct, and that's after tax.
After tax.
Okay, on the hybrid plan, it's proposed to be 10.5% pre-tax.
10.5% pre-tax?
Yes.
Now, the reason why I wanted to ask that was, with that 9.5% after-tax contribution, we have a $1.4 billion liability today, and now we're proposing a plan that kind of takes us back into a defined benefit arena that has a slightly higher contribution rate of 10.5%. But my concern is that we're not going to ever get away from having unfunded liabilities on our back. If we have an unfunded liability of $1.4 billion, granted, we had lower contribution rates at 6%, now it's 9.5%, but the risk of unfunded liabilities being borne by the people of Guam with this hybrid plan, if we adopt this, it will now be in perpetuity. Right now, the unfunded liability is set to expire in 2031. So in 17 years, we will have no more unfunded liability, more or less, with the current status quo. But if we adopt this hybrid plan, we're going to have, the door will be open for unfunded liabilities in perpetuity.
The cost for the plan is taken into account already, and it purports to pay off the unfunded. I think what we need to do is sort of carve out the unfunded portion and look at the normal cost, because the normal cost is actually what it's going to cost the government to run the plans after the unfunded liability is paid off.
What is to prevent the same circumstances that caused the unfunded liabilities in the past?
I can answer that, Senator.
To affect unfunded, to cause an unfunded liability in the future?
Sure, and that's a really good question. And just to address a couple of points, the 9.5% didn't cause the unfunded liability. What has caused it, as was pointed out, was the enhancement of benefits without paying for it. So if you enhance a benefit and keep the 9.5%, then it's going to cause that unfunded liability, and it's going to cause it to grow. There were other instances as well, though. There was the early out, and some other, just some other benefits that happened. So that if the unfunded liability continues, or if those benefits were paid for, that unfunded liability wouldn't have been created. The hybrid plan creates an unfunded liability to the tune of, I think, Rich said, $119, $100 million, but that too will be paid off in 2031. There's nothing to prevent it except the quarter that has prevented us from increasing the unfunded liability for the last 13 years. And so that, that we think is something that didn't exist before, and something that has currently kept the unfunded liability from growing out of proportion.
But there's still the risk of market fluctuations, there's still the risk of longevity risk?
Absolutely, yeah.
And those risks will be borne by the government of Guam?
Well, market fluctuations are part of the construction of the strategic allocation, accounts for that. And if the portfolio performs as we design it, then we will create a long-term return that will still get us to the payment of the unfunded liability. That's, that's, market risks can't be avoided, I mean, you know that.
But as well as the longevity risk. I mean, let's say that there's some kind of medical breakthrough and people live to 120 years old, you know, this hybrid plan is going to be in perpetuity, you know, once we have those kind of longevity risks factoring into the equation, all of a sudden, we're going to have that unfunded liability to deal with.
And that's why the actuary exists, because the actuarial study that's performed every year takes into account the actual experience, and those studies create the new contribution rate, create a new actuarial report that we guide and you guide your contribution rate by. So, yeah, all those will continue to exist.
So we will perpetually have an unfunded liability risk?
No, see, no. Provided that the contribution rate matches the actuarial rate on an annual basis, we will pay off the, we will pay off the unfunded liability. And if the government continues to do that, that unfunded liability will continue to be zero, and we will continue to have a normal cost to run the fund.
No, but my point is, let's say, for example, people start outliving their annuities.
Then the experience study will take into account those actuarial studies.
So contribution rates will have to go up. And so it'll be just like the current unfunded liability situation we have now.
If any, right.
Or paying a higher percentage than what we anticipated.
But it will be a normal cost, it wouldn't be the unfunded portion. The unfunded portion is when we don't pay for benefits and enhance them, or something in our model doesn't work, and we don't make the adjustments for it the following year, then that liability becomes unfunded. But as long as we pay for it, as those experience studies demonstrate they exist, then going forward, it's not, it's paid for, therefore, it's not unfunded, and it doesn't become a liability.
No, but my point is, if we're paying, for example, 1.8% as the employer, right? And then the employees start living far longer than what their annuity originally projected them to live to, that 1.8% is going to have to go up.
Well, sure, I mean...
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at.
But that's not an unfunded liability, is my...
It would be unfunded if we didn't increase the 1.8.
If we didn't fund it.
That's right.
Then it's unfunded.
That's right. And so what I'm getting at is the calculation here of the 24.9% of unfunded liability that we're paying right now. That number is because we had increases in annuity costs that we didn't project, and so we had to increase the percentage based on how much we're paying for that unfunded portion. And so if we have, for example, longevity risk...
We had increases in annuity cost, and we had an underfunding in annuity payments, right? Or in contribution payments.
But bottom line is, all those risks are borne by the government, and we're going to have to continue to pay for those with an increased employer rate.
The risks of running a pension fund is a risk that's borne by the retirement fund. We give you the number, and you decide to pay for it, you know, or not.
So if we don't, then there's an unfunded liability.
If you don't pay for something, then it's not funded.
That's right.
By definition, it's unfunded, and that's correct.
Mm-hmm. And that's basically the situation that happened with the old plan that brought us to where we are today, along with military credits and education credits and all kinds of things.
Those were unfunded, precisely, yeah. You enhance benefits, absolutely, you know what I mean? And I think we're just arguing in semantics and going in a circle. The bottom line is, if you enhance a benefit and don't pay for it, it becomes unfunded.
That's right.
And so that adds to the unfunded liability. And that has happened in the past.
And so what's to prevent, my question is, what's to prevent that happening in the future?
Absolutely, and that's a great question. The last 13 years, we've had a court order that says the retirement fund is not to pay benefits if it's not funded. And so that court order that didn't exist before, that gives us an explicit directive on what to do if benefits are enhanced and it's not paid for.
Sure, so if we in the future adopt this hybrid plan, and somebody introduces a bill to give out military credits for service, we're going to have to increase the employer portion that we're going to have to pay.
That's what you meant?
Yeah, that's right. And so this 24.9% that we would have paid off in 2031, if some overzealous politician wants to give out military credits or education credits, or if they want to, you know, if they want to give out any kind of special benefit, you know, an early out or whatever, we're going to have to bear the brunt of that cost.
Well, I think, Senator...
We're exposing ourselves tremendously to political risk.
Well, the political risk resides on that side of the table.
That's right.
Right, and not with the Board.
I'm very familiar with this side of the table.
The Board's fiduciary role, especially now after the court order, is to fight, to fight any such legislation that is not fully funded. So the reality is, you guys make the policy. If you want a certain benefit, all we ask is that you pay for it. If you don't pay for it, we have to fight it based upon the court order. That's the Board's fiduciary role. And so the issue here is not what benefits you should provide, it's whether you can afford to provide those benefits and pay for it here and into the future.
Now, if we were to go with social security, if the social security fund were to be short for whatever reason, it was mentioned that we would have to probably extend the year that people can claim benefits, or the employer portion here under social security of 6.2% might go up. Right, those are all, those are all risks. Now, there's, of course, other possible policy solutions on the federal side, because once we pull ourselves of social security, it's not just Gov Guam that's going to get affected, but every single employer across the nation. And so if someone wants to raise employer taxes, they're going to have to reckon with the entire United States private sector. And so I would reckon, and, you know, this is all conjecture, but maybe taxes won't go up, maybe the age won't increase, maybe the federal government will actually decide one day to fund it, I don't know. But if we went with social security, the funding risk would be predominantly on the federal side, and they could pass that through with an increase in the payroll taxes.
But Senator, the federal government's policy approach has to be very similar to what Vince and Jerry were just saying. If they want to provide military credits, education credits, et cetera, they're going to have to do exactly what this legislature would have to do as well, which is raise the cost of social security or change something somewhere else. So I don't see the difference between the policy choices that the legislature will have to make in the future as being that much different than what the federal people are going to have to pay in terms of the scenarios you've presented of enriched benefits and unfunded liabilities.
The big difference would be, if we had social security from the inception of the D B plan instead of a D B plan, we wouldn't have a $1.4 billion unfunded liability. We would have social security for all Gov Guam employees.
The government didn't extend that to 1968.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but that's generally what the difference is. I mean, if there's going to be unfunded mandates, the federal government's going to cover their own unfunded mandates. If we have unfunded mandates on a hybrid plan, where the ones are going to have to cover that.
This exercise is going back and forth over the last 30 years. It's a question now, social security wouldn't give you enhanced benefits, wouldn't give you military credit, wouldn't give you service credit, whereas our old D B plan was very general. You can get a credible service of 30 years and only serve 20 years. With 10, 10 years, there is service education all the way through. That's the cost, and that's what we're living with. That's why we got out of that, to go into another plan. You cannot live on that. So the new plan is not going to have that same benefit that you have in the old plan. We're certainly not going to give more, you know, all the things that we'd give to the old plan to the new plan. No, you take it the way it is now.
But the...
We don't need to do that.
The political risk would be, though, that in the future, somebody may propose that.
Well, there's always, there's always among the 15 guys that want to stand out, okay? There's always like that.
You know it, Uncle Joe.
You know, there's always like that. There's no guarantee on that, believe me. Everybody wants to get reelected.
I just wanted to establish that there is still, there would still possibly be an unfunded liability risk. My other question that I was concerned with was with regard to portability of the hybrid plan. So, for example, let's say I worked in Gov Guam for 15 years, and I wanted to go work in the private sector. How would I, and the private sector has a 401K in social security, but I put in 15 years under the hybrid plan in Gov Guam, how would my retirement in Gov Guam convert over to my retirement into the private sector if I wanted to go and do that? Because we have a lot of government employees who find that maybe after 10 years, they want to go do something differently.
No, and that's a very good question, and that's why the contributions under the hybrid plan are pre-tax. And it's pre-tax because it's qualified in the Internal Revenue Code. So what has to happen is someone leaves Gov Guam after 15 years of service, if their new retirement plan is willing to accept that pre-tax dollars from the hybrid plan, then it's really up to that other plan, but it is portable.
So they would be able to transfer their hybrid balances into their 401K, for example?
Yes, because it is, it is a pre-tax.
But they wouldn't have accumulated any social security years for those 15 years of service?
Correct.
Yeah, but if they had social security, they would have accumulated 15 years of social security in the government of Guam, and they would have been able to transfer that over as well with their D C balances.
If the government paid for the social security part, yeah.
Yeah, and my question kind of goes in reverse to, let's say I am living in the States, I'm one of the many Chamoros or many former islanders living in the States, and I've been working there for 15 years, and I want to come back and give back to my island. And I've been contributing to a 401K in social security, and I want to come back and work for the government of Guam. How does my retirement in the private sector, coming from the private sector, transfer into the government of Guam hybrid plan?
It would transfer into the 457 plan.
So I would not have the credited years of service, I would not have, I would no longer accumulate social security. All I would have is my 401K now going into a 457.
Well, that's the same as any other rollover plan, Senator, is if you roll over from a 401K, your years of service don't, because under a D C plan, it's not years of service on retirement, it's actually age.
Exactly.
And so that's the same in this situation.
But you wouldn't be able to accumulate any more social security years under the hybrid plan?
Correct.
So somebody transferring, so then this hybrid plan, from what it appears to me in sharing that, would be, there would be disincentive for people to come from the private sector into the government, because they would no longer accumulate social security years. And there may also be a disincentive to go from the government of Guam into the private sector, because you would not have accumulated social security in the government, and you have to start from scratch in the private sector.
Senator, that hasn't stopped anyone from coming into Gov Guam today, and that, you know, it's not portable today, social security or the years of service.
I understand, but if we were to, instead of offering this hybrid plan, offer a D C plan with social security, then we wouldn't have any of those issues to deal with anymore.
That's very true, Senator, but if the policymakers up there decide D C and social security, as long as they pay for it, that's the bottom line.
And so, and that kind of takes me to the, almost the conclusion of my...
Can I interrupt you? I'm a little bit bothered by your statement, saying that any person who works someplace else can carry there and be given credible service in the government?
No, no.
And so that you can get credit?
Not at all, no.
I misunderstood you.
What I'm actually suggesting...
Because government's certainly not going to give you credit for working in a private sector.
Absolutely not. What I am suggesting is...
Okay, I just want to be sure of that.
Oh, yes.
Because a lot of people like to do that, you know?
No, no. What I was suggesting was, if you had service in the private sector 15 years and got those social security years...
Your face on the previous year was like that, guys spent 10 years outside, and you say, oh, why don't I transfer to Gov Guam so I can get 10 years and I retire in government salary? And 10 years, never worked for the government?
Mm-hmm.
Why should the government give him credit service?
I very much agree with you.
But that's the same, so I just want to be sure that, because that argument had gone over the last 15, 20 years, so there's nothing new, okay? There's always some private entrepreneur here wants to cash in.
Senator, can I just answer your question in another, just very briefly? You know, we looked at the same benefit for, from social security and D C that would equal the hybrid benefit of about $3,700. It would take social security plus a 3.9% D C to do that, i.e. everybody putting in 3.9 instead of 5. The contribution, the government's contribution, total contribution raises from about 30% to 33% to do that, so there is a cost issue in the issue you raised.
Yes, it'll go to 33% up until 2031, but by then, it will drop down to 11.84% because the unfunded liability will be wiped out, and we wouldn't be facing any more unfunded liability risk going forward.
That exists with the hybrid.
You can just speak tonight.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, that same scenario exists with the hybrid.
Assuming that the same problems that got the D B plan in trouble don't get the hybrid plan in trouble.
Well, I mean, but that, but you could still enhance benefits on the D B plan whenever you want. I mean, that prerogative exists, and if you decide not to pay for it, then it's the responsibility of the Board to fight those, to fight those options. That's the check and balance that exists today. So those risks will always be there.
That check and balance existed throughout the life of the D B?
No, not without the court order.
Not without the court order.
Right, so it was unclear whether that check and balance existed. There was a point when it was told to the Board that it's law and you must follow it, and that was an opinion by a former A G. So it's not necessarily true to say that that check and balance always existed, because it was blurry at one point. The court order cleared it up.
It does provide teeth, but it still requires the government would pay for it even if they dished out all these benefits. My point is that with this D C plan and with social security, you can't, you don't, you take out the local political risk, the same local political risk that sank the old D B plan.
And you're changing for federal risk. But, you know, I mean, there's risk wherever you go, and...
Agreed.
Bottom line is, there's always going to be a trade-off. The point, I think, was made earlier that there is no silver bullet, right? I mean, there's no panacea, there's not going to be one plan that addresses every issue. Our target group are those employees that are here today, and what I'm hearing you saying is that the portability issue, the fact that if you work for five years and employees that are coming in, the social security and D C plan are going to work well for them, and that, I don't disagree with that. to work well for them, and that, I don't disagree with that. But it doesn't address the target group that we were looking at to try to address today. Those who have been working for the government in the old DC plan and are 40, 50 years old and about ready to retire with no Social Security benefits on them.
Well, that's, that, okay, that takes me to my second to the last question then that I wanted to ask, which was, let's say you're 50 years old, and let's say you have a $125,000 balance in your DC plan.
Or 40, which is the average.
Okay, let's say you're 40, you know, and you're going to work till now 65?
Well, let's say you're 40 and you're 40, which is the average and the actual, which was the numbers that we're working with.
Okay. 40 and you're...
Forty, 40 years old, $40,000.
Okay, $40,000. And so for the next 25 years to 65...
Okay, if you're, okay.
You're going to have a $40,000 balance to start with, and you're going to contribute 12% of a $4,000 average annual salary for 25 years.
Okay.
That comes out to $4,800 a year. That comes out to about, what, $48,000, $100,000, $120,000 balance in the hybrid? And then you retire. What's the monthly annuity for that?
I think we have that number, right? 40 years old and you retire with the hybrid, I think that number was close to, if I recall correctly, just under, under $3,000.
$3,000 a month?
Oh, the hyb, well, let's see. I may be wrong.
Senator, just to make sure you're right, you want us to look at the hybrid or the DC side?
Hybrid. 40 at 40. What do we got for a monthly annuity when they retire at 65?
Okay, while we don't have that exact example, but this is close. This is someone who would be hired at 35 years old.
Okay.
And so if they're 40 now, they would have five years of service. So assuming they're age 40 now with five years of service, and then they work till 25, under the hybrid, they would have $3,747. If their starting salary was $40,000, then it grew to $80,000 at retirement.
That's a month, monthly?
Monthly.
And what's the actuarial age that we can expect this person to live to?
The life expectancy for a 65-year-old is 20 years.
So we have $44,964 times 20 years. So we're going to pay out a lifetime annuity benefit of $899,000 on a $160,000 overall contribution. Yes, that sounds like the road to unfunded liability.
Well, Senator, I'd like to make a couple comments. I'm sure some points have already been made.
State your name to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Maggie Rabowski. I'm the Retirement Funds Investment Consultant. There are two issues you have been focusing on, and I think there are two great issues to focus on for retirement. And these two issues are the longevity risk you have pointed out, as well as the fact that there's a possibility for market return that falls short, and therefore we have to be facing unfunded liability, be facing, I'm sorry, be facing a shortfall from our expectation as we stand today. Now, those two risks exist with or without hybrid plan. It is, the difference is who bears those risks? And I would have to argue the hybrid plan stands in a much better place to deal with those two risks than a participant in a DC plan, than any individual. And this is because in a hybrid plan, the longevity risk is shared. Not everybody is going to live past a particular point that you're going to run out of money, right? That risk in a hybrid plan is shared by the population, and the more population is sharing that risk, that risk becomes smaller. An individual, if this individual is going to outlive his actuarial date, that risk is 100%, right? If this individual has to deal with that risk, he really has no means to deal with that risk. In a hybrid plan, that is being shared by the, by the population in the entire fund. So there is a benefit to increase the pool that shares this risk. So that's number one risk. Number two risk is the market risk. Now, the market risk is also better dealt with by a hybrid plan than a DC plan or any individual. This is because a hybrid plan now will have a perpetuity as a lifespan. It does not expire, because as long as people are contributing and as long as there are participants to be served by the plan, the plan does not die. Therefore, the plan has unlimited life, and that is a great, great, that's a great proposition for getting a great investment return, because you do not have to dial down risk as time goes on. You can always take prudent levels of risk, hopefully, and get paid for that risk. Now, an individual does not have that ability to do it, because we all are confined by our lifespan, which is limited. Therefore, for any individual, you have to deal with the fact that when you get older, you have to be holding more and more cash, more and more non-performing assets, and therefore you expect the return during the lifetime is shorter. It is very hard for an individual to really devise a path that's perfect. Now, that risk being shared by the hybrid plan will really be in a great position to deal with those risks. So let's, let's think about the goal we're trying to achieve here. We're really trying to prevent, to create another generation of retirees that live in poverty. Now, obviously, we have to pay for that. The question is, what's the best for the society to deal with those risks that the whole generation of retirees may be dealing with? The hybrid plan will be the best answer compared to all these different options. And I know in, earlier, Social Security was brought up as a topic. Now, Social Security is not a funded entity. There is no money in Social Security. It is a pay-as-you-go system. Therefore, if you look at the demographic trend, it's basically the next generation pays taxes to support the previous generation. This country is entering into a phase where the aging of the population is going to achieve a point where we have not, we have nothing before. The baby boomer generation is, is much larger than the next generation. The Social Security pay-as-you-go system, as it stands now, if nothing is changed, it's going to be run out of money, it's going to be running out of money by the year 20, by the year 2033. So that's not very long down the road. So we can, we can really be sure that before we reach there, things will have to change. And people will have to work a lot longer to get the benefit, or the benefit has to be cut, or the taxes have to go up. So it is really, you were correct to say that risk is shifted to the federal level. It is not a local level, but aren't we also supposed to balance out the fact that we wanted to take care of the retirees as well on the local level? Because that is also impacting the viability of the economy here and the livelihood of the people here. So, so I don't know if I got off topic, but I'd like to just get, catch up with my thoughts. Sorry for being tardy.
I just wanted to close with a discussion on the windfall provision, because I know that we had a previous conversation about how if it's a government pension that will affect your Social Security earnings. And I was always under the assumption that if you're in the defined contribution plan, you wouldn't be subject to the windfall provision, but the assumption on the retirement fund side is that you still would be because it's a government pension?
That is correct, and that's happening today, Senator.
And so my question then is, but what if I, upon retirement, rolled my DC plan into an IRA? That shouldn't count towards the windfall provision anymore?
It, well, what happens, this is what Social Security does. Social Security looks to the source of the funding. And if that source of the funding is through a government pension or through a government retirement-type plan, then they will allocate that cost to the windfall provision.
But if I roll over into an IRA, it's no longer a government pension?
Well, the funding source came from a government pension. So those are the questions that retirement fund gets when a DC, a current DC member retires and goes to Social Security, because they do qualify. Social Security requires a retirement fund to fill out the form. And even if they rolled it into an IRA, that IRA will have to fill out the form as to the funding source. So there's always keeping track of where the funding source came from.
I've never seen an IRA have to fill out a form to identify the funding source.
Well, with, if, if the IRAs, if you say it's coming from a, it's rolled over because it's tagged as rollover, right? So they're going to ask, where did that rollover come from?
Okay. But we didn't calculate the, the impact of the windfall provision using that kind of IRA scenario? We're just assuming, we're just assuming that the IRS will consider it as a government pension?
Social Security will.
Oh, I'm sorry, Social Security, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions if we can go back to one of the presentation slides, slide number six, where it breaks down the different scenarios. And just as a, the first question regarding the monthly benefit, was there a static rate of return across all plans, or did it fluctuate?
Assume rate of return on...
For the DC plan and the 457 plan, both assumed 5% investment returns going forward.
For the DC plan and the...
457 accumulations under the hybrid.
And for Social Security?
No, there's no investment earnings with Social Security.
And the, the different scenarios with the 3.9% DC scenario?
The same, 5%.
5%. Okay. So when I'm looking at the, the different cost components or the different contribution rates, there's a direct correlation between the contribution rate and the rate of return or the monthly benefits, except for the hybrid? Is there a reason for that? So for example, the total as a percentage of pay, current DC plan at 10%, you have a, you have a monthly benefit of 1651. It goes, with Social Security, if that percentage of pay goes up to 12.4, you have an increased monthly benefit. Same scenario with the Social Security plus 5%, 22.4 benefit goes up. Same with the 3.9, right? Or, excuse me, you know, there's a direct correlation, right? So it goes down with the Social Security plus 3.9%, goes down to 20.2, the benefit decreases.
That's right.
But on the hybrid plan, it goes down to 12.3, and the benefit is similar to the Social Security plus 3.9%. So if you, if I can understand, the percentage of pay and the contributions are actually going down, but the benefits are going up, how's that paid for?
Yeah, so the hybrid, it's just a more efficient vehicle for providing retirement benefits. One is you get the professional management of the investments. That does not occur under Social Security, under the DC plans. So you're able to provide a bigger benefit with the same dollars, because the DB, the hybrid system can earn more on the investments than a regular DC member can earn in their account. Social Security benefits are highly weighted towards the lower-paid people. The percentage that, a salary that's replaced by Social Security is higher at lower wages and lower at higher wages. So Social Security provides a floor-type benefit, but the more somebody makes, the less the Social Security benefit increases. So, and Social Security also provides other disability and other benefits too. But the bottom line is that the hybrid plan is a more efficient with their dollars than the other vehicles.
And the rate of return for the hybrid plan was 7%?
7%.
Okay. So if you assumed a 7% rate of return on the Social Security plus the 3.9 DC, the benefit would be higher?
The Social Security number wouldn't change, but the DC part would.
Right, okay. You, during your presentation, you alluded to, you made a comment regarding an assumption regarding assuming 5,000 DC contributors or current DC members that rolled over would have excess account balances. Okay, tell me how that assumption factors into the benefit? What if that scenario, what if that assumption were not to be the case? Would the benefit go down?
Yes, they, well, part of the hybrid benefit is, is the accumulation of the 457 amount plus the accumulation of that excess account balance, which exists. So if that excess account balance does not exist, then the hybrid plan formula, the 1.75% would not change, but that extra account they have would, would not be there. So the benefits would be a little less without that.
Because the, some of the testimony, well, let me just ask you this. In the current DC plan, does that excess account balance exist now?
Yeah, it's in the DC plan currently.
So that, so right now, there are 5,000 members that have excess account balances in the DC plan?
Well, it's, there's 8,000 members with the DC account balance. If they all transferred to the hybrid, approximately 5,000 of them would have an excess account balance.
Okay. And that's the next question too, is the assumption is predicated based on the Milliman report on slide 15. There's an asterisk there that assumes 100% of all DC members transfer to the hybrid, right? So all of this is based on that assumption. In the scenario where that's not the case, let's say the, there's 5,000 of these excess account balance members choose not to, what would the cost to the government be then? Because right now, it's, you're projecting it to be at 29.3. In the scenario where that assumption doesn't exist, let's say those 5,000 don't, what would be the cost, the total employer costs? Would it go up?
Yeah, it would go up under scenarios where not all DC members transfer over. And so in that case, you know, it could be, it could go up.
Okay. Because you had also had mentioned in your testimony that the, if they were all to go over, the transfer over, it would increase the unfunded liability by just over $100 million?
That's correct.
Okay, so...
That's just the liability side.
Just the liability side. On slide five of the Milliman report, you had mentioned incremental increases to monthly benefits after retirement. What percentage is that?
Those are fixed dollar amounts. It's on a sliding scale. Once somebody has a monthly benefit of 10, or not monthly, annual benefit of $10,000, then they get a $200 per year increase in their retirement benefit.
$200 per year?
$200 per year. So for those, it's slightly less than 2%.
Okay. And then going back to slide 15, sorry for jumping around here, but going back to slide 15 of the Milliman report, can you explain to, to me why the, the cost for the DB plan and the DB unfunded liability, why those numbers go up with the hybrid plan?
Okay, so the, the DB unfunded liability goes up because if all members transfer to the DC, then the, there's a $100 million increase. The DB normal cost, that's as a percentage of total payroll, so the 2.05% under the DC and Social Security columns, that's just for the current DB members divided by the total Gov Guam payroll. Under the hybrid, you'd have more people in, at the DB portion of the hybrid plan, and so their costs, you're basically adding the 1.8% for the hybrid to the DB normal cost.
There was some testimony regarding the stability or the financial viability of Social Security. Do not the same risk exist with the current retirement plan, considering the 1.3 or 1.5 billion unfunded liability? What, what happens in the event that that unfunded liability is not paid out? Do the same risks exist for the retirement plan as we allude to with Social Security?
It's a similar risk. The, the difference is that with the, the current DB and with the hybrid plan, there is a plan in place to pay off the unfunded li- in place to pay off the unfunded liability by 2031, and that's accounted for in the current contribution rate. With Social Security, there is no plan to pay off the unfunded liability. We know there's a crisis coming. The 6.2% is not enough to pay for the benefits. And so either the 6.2 has to go up, or the benefits have to come down, or you delay the Social Security retirement age. Something has to happen. There is no plan to fix it. Sooner or later, there, something's going to happen.
Okay. Are there any other ways to pay down that liability, other than defining it in this total contribution that the government makes as a percentage of payroll? Could there be an adjustment in benefits that could somehow defer and reduce that liability?
Yeah, you cannot reduce benefits that have already been earned by participants. And so most of the liability is for benefits that have already been earned under the old DB plan. So it would take some action to reduce those benefits. The other alternative besides contributions is investment earnings, trying to earn more than the 7% per year.
Okay. Because there was, you know, there were also some other current concerns about who bears the cost associated with the plan, right? And so right now, you have the benefit, the cost to the employee going from 5% to 5.5% inclusive of the 1.1% contribution to the 457 plan. Now, if you push back the retirement age, would that have an effect on being able, on addressing the unfunded liability side? Or any of the benefit side?
Sure, it would, a lower, a later retirement age would reduce the cost of the plan. So that could be used to reduce either the employee paid portion or the employer paid portion.
Okay, was that, is that ever considered by the board?
No, it wasn't.
Is there any reason why it wasn't? It's, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, this 1.3 billion unfunded liability seems a?
And that's a good question, Senator. We were simply just, we were looking at those members that are in the DC plan as our target group to try to fix. Pushing back the retirement age would have us address those individuals who are currently active DB members. And that wasn't a population that was part of this analysis. One thing I think that Rich didn't mention that could also help to reduce the unfunded liability, or at least the contribution rate as well, is a pension bond which was explored at some point. Not necessarily to pay off the entire 1.4 billion, but a portion of that. It would cap the interest rate. And so the fluctuations in contribution rates going forward would be, would be reduced by the amount that you would pay off through a pension bond at a, at a fixed rate over either a longer or shorter period of time. So that's another option. The cutting of benefits is something that is a pretty drastic measure. It's now being used in Detroit and I think San Bernardino and certainly in Saipan. They've reduced benefit payments, not age, but they've reduced payments. And so it's something that we looked at as a drastic measure, but in this case, in looking at the study, we didn't, we didn't consider it because it wasn't the population that we were trying to address.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. It's obvious from some of the responses that were given that someone did a census to determine how many people are in the DC plan. And I know some of my colleagues are interested in that number because there's the 5,000, the 2,000. So how many people are currently in the DC plan?
8,000, approximately 8,000 active, active members.
What about the DB?
As of 9/30/2013, it's 7,885.
What they gave us was 7,885 in the DC. And the DB is 2,862. So total then will be 10,749.
I just wanted that, that reconfirmed. I knew what the number was, I just wanted to add that. The other thing is, is that we banded about this number of excess, excess annuity. Or what is that?
Excess to the actuarial value?
Yes, excess actuarial.
To the account balance?
That's correct.
And you have about 5,000 people that possibly have an excess amount.
That's correct.
How much are we talking about per individual employee are we talking about in that amount?
42 million total. But each individual?
Correct.
Average, divide that by 5,000, so 42 divided by 5,000 is the average. 42 million total divided by the 5,000 members.
That's a little over eight.
That's good math, yeah. That's good for me.
Right. It's about 80. And eight zero, yes. And you consider that excess?
It's above zero.
How long do you think they would survive on that if that was their complete retirement?
Oh, no, no, no. But that's not their complete retirement. That's, that is the amount above what is necessary to buy into.
No, I understand.
So that's not.
For them to buy into the hybrid plan, how much would it cost of the $40,000 employee?
The factor, we have that number too, yes.
The salary times 5.46.
Okay. So, okay, go ahead. That's strange.
I believe, Rich, stop me if I want, I just go to Rich.
The actuarial cost, the way it's calculated, it's some percentage of a person's historical compensation under the DC plan. We've estimated that to be about 5.5%. So if somebody worked one year in the DC plan and they made $40,000, their actuarial cost would be 5.5% of the 40,000, so 2,000 some dollars.
What I'm trying to get at is, you're saying that they have excess, 5,000 of them have more than what they would need to buy into the DC plan, the hybrid plan, the actuary, I mean, actuarial costs. But actually, in absolute terms, that would not be sufficient to pay for them to retire for one year? Yeah, I mean, I just wanted that understood because it's not like somebody has 400 or $800,000 in, and that's how much they have. What we're talking about is 40,000 or maybe 50,000. And regardless, that would be insufficient for them to survive in a year. Like, I can't go to the gym on any given evening without a fireman coming up to me and telling me, I only have 70 or 90,000 and I've been in the service 20 years and that's all I have. And I said, well, that's less than you make currently. And they say, yes, sir. And I'm going, you're obviously not going to, and so they're constantly badgering me about when this plan's going to come out. And that's what I'm trying to get, get one of you to testify to, or at least speak up about, is that though we're asking them to transfer an amount over into the hybrid plan, I mean, into this hybrid plan, the amount that they're being asked to transfer is not going to be sufficient for them to survive on a 20-year retirement. Or am I wrong?
That's correct if they stayed in the DC plan.
Yes, that's what I mean. That's what I'm trying, trying to get at, is that they're, the amount that they're being asked to trans, to, to buy into this hybrid plan is much less than 20 years of retirement at the 30,000 or 40,000 that you're talking about. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I knew that was like pulling teeth.
Could I clarify that, Mr. Chairman?
Who's going to be advising then these employees to show them then that, you know, the difference between the DC and buying into the hybrid?
Well, that's why I said they have six months, that's why I said they have six months within which these people and all of the employees of the retirement fund are going to have to sit down and hopefully, which is the reason why I ended my sponsor statement with, you have six months to each one of you out there. Individually, go to the retirement fund and have them talk to you and you go through and they'll do the calculations for you, how much you're going to have to transfer over, how much you're going to have to be contributing in the future, and be able to make the decision. If you think you're going to, you're the investment wizard and you can take your money and have $1 million in 20 years, then great, stay in the DC plan and you don't have to buy into the hybrid plan. If there's a market drop or something happens, that's, that's it, you know? And if you only have, you may have $200,000 now and if you drop dead tomorrow like Senator Munia Barnes's example, when the widow spends that $200,000, she's done and that's it. You know? So I'm just trying to get that, to try to get anybody out there to understand what we're trying to do here in protecting them.
I, you know, as we stated earlier, this is not the silver bullet and the plan is not perfect for everyone. There's going to be people in the DC plan that after sitting down and looking at the numbers, may be better off. Because if you started in GovGuam in the DC plan at 20, you have to work till 65.
That's right.
And so there may be not an incentive for those individuals. And that's why the plan is not to get everyone into the DC, into the hybrid plan. The plan is for new employees going forward to provide that balance of a DB floor with the ability to increase that benefit over time. Now, there are DC employees that will benefit from the hybrid plan and that's why there's an option in the statute as it is now.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So why is the assumption that, why is the assumption then on the Milliman report, assuming that everybody would transfer over if that, if your, if your testimony is accurate? Because it assumes it.
That was the, that's the worst case scenario. So we wanted to provide the worst case scenario if everyone were to transfer over, the effect of the unfunded liability.
But it makes the numbers look like the best case scenario from a cost perspective?
Uh, not necessarily.
What is the worst? Just ask the question.
I'll have Rich compute it.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. The worst case scenario is if the DC members who transfer over have very low DC account balances. So you're providing a fixed monthly benefit. So it's really comes down to an individual by individual basis to determine the worst case. There are scenarios where the cost could increase by offering the hybrid to the DC members and depends on who transfers over. It's hard to tell who's going to, and so we're provided the numbers, assuming 100% transferred over. But we do have some other scenarios, assuming certain employees transfer over and those don't, we'd be happy to share those with you.
Right, but just so that we're in agreement, the numbers that are used from a cost perspective made the assumption that 100% transferred over, right? Because that, that in effect paints the best picture from a cost perspective, correct? It's the lowest cost.
It's the lowest total employer cost as a percentage of payroll. It's the.
Correct. Yeah, okay, thanks.
What, what about the worst case scenario where only the 3,000 who don't have overages transfer over? I'm sure you guys must have stress tested it. What does that come out to?
I think the worst case scenario was only those over 50 transferred over because they would, they would be closest to. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, the contribution rate, what, do you have that?
Yeah.
I remember talking about that. It was 3114? 31, 30, 30.13 was the contribution rate? 31.13? 31.13. So from a cost perspective, that would be considered the worst case scenario because... And those would be individuals who are 50 and over only.
Just, just for the edification, myself and maybe even some of the people out there, these DC employees, the ones that have done well, in air quotes, what kind of balances are they showing for the ones that have done the best?
Good ones.
Who has done the best?
I think the DZ6, right? Do you have those numbers? I think, I don't know a balance, maybe you have those numbers.
Yeah.
I don't, but you're, you're asking like who has the most in the DC account? What's the maximum account balance?
Do you know the biggest balance?
I see about 300,000.
That's about the largest. Yeah, I was going to say six.
Yeah, and what I, I'm trying to even get to that point where 300,000, if, how much of an annuity would, would that provide for them if that, if that was what they had?
It's going to be similar to that.
Yeah, so an account balance, if someone has at age 65, someone with an account balance of $364,000, that would equate to an annuity of 1,651, estimated annuity, monthly.
And, and that would be someone at age 65 who had that amount. But most of the employees right now are, were the, were, what's the mean?
So, right, so 40 years old and 40,000 is, is the mean. So that 300,000 would be on the upper tail, right?
That's what I'm trying to get to, to show that there's very few up at that upper end and with their ability to be able to, to survive with the average GovGuam salary of $40,000 a year right now.
That's correct.
Would, would be short.
But just to clarify also, all lots being equal on the numbers, the hybrid plan is assuming 40 years old, $40,000 average income at a 7% rate of return.
The hybrid?
Hybrid.
The hybrid, the hybrid assumes, the actuarial rate of return for our current strategic allocation is 7%, right? That's, that's as of today. Last year, the legislature passed laws that liberalized our, our investment opportunities. And so we're in the process of redoing our strategic allocation, which would change the actuarial rate of return to something a little higher. So, but that's what we're using as of today.
And that would be the assumption also for the hybrid plan?
The hybrid would be commingled, right? So the hybrid assets or assets coming in from the DC into the, into this new plan would be commingled with assets of, we'd manage them all the same way.
Yeah, but to get to the hybrid annuity, you're assuming a 7% rate of return?
Correct, correct. Because we're, yeah.
And I just wanted to clarify also for the edification of the listening audience, that if the average 40-year-old with a $40,000 balance got a 7% rate of return on their DC plan balance, they would also have an annuity equal to the hybrid plan.
Right. But if the average, that's correct. And that assumption, actually, well, I guess my point is that what you don't have with an average DC person, that you do have with commingling those in assets that are managed by somebody who does this for a living, is that professional investment advisor who does it.
But that takes me now to my follow-up question that I had with respect to what the speaker was asking, because it was a very interesting question. Right now, we're only contributing 5% of the government and the employer is contributing 5%. Now, this plan is going to have the employer contribute an additional 5%. So they're going to have more taken out of their paycheck to meet this hybrid plan demand. So if we just increase the DC plan employee contribution to 10.35% and we still continue to contribute the government's 5%, they would end up way better off if they just got 7%, the same that was assumed for the hybrid plan. And let's say we threw in what I think would be a really good idea, and that is to provide professional advisement to all GovGuam employees, they can help, help them manage their retirements. But if we did all that and we got 7% plus 10% employee contribution on top of the 5% employer, that would be way higher than the hybrid.
It doesn't address the risk issue and it doesn't provide the floor benefit, which was one of the objectives of the hybrid plan. You're not giving it today. was one of the objectives of the hybrid plan. You're not giving it today.
Just to comment on that, looking at the DC plan, if you were to increase the employee contribution rate from 5% to say 10%, then the, you're in effect increasing the total contributions from 10% to 15%. So, there, that would be a 50% increase in the contributions that go in and a 50% increase in the DC plan benefit. So, the DC column would increase from 1,651 to about $2,400, $2,500. That's assuming 5% investment returns. If they were able to earn 7%, then that would, number would go up. But it would still, under this scenario, it would still be less than the hybrid plan.
I want to address the expected return issue. The national survey for the past 30 years has been that the DB plan on average returned 2.5% a year more than a DC plan average. Now, 2.5% a year translates, if you keep doing that for 30 years, translates to twice as much wealth as the alternative. So, 2.5% compounded for 30 years equals twice as much wealth. So, that differential is huge. Now, can we use tools like advice to improve that return? Well, the experiment has been going on for the past 10 years and the result has been very, very discouraging. The issues are that the added cost can really be very hard to recover the added cost with adding advice services to DC plans. That has been experimented many times over. The cheapest you could get is 0.5% a year these days by adding on these services to, to the DC plan. And DC plan option by itself already has, by national survey done by Deloitte last year, the, the cost of, for an individual to get into investments compared to a professionally managed DB plan, all-in cost, is 0.3% higher. That does not count the added services if you want to add advice. So, if you want to add another 50 basis points or 0.5% to, to the cost, the total cost differential will be 0.8%. And we know in this business, 0.8% is a huge hurdle for somebody to overcome. And so, that's number one issue that can compromise a DC plan participant's return. Another issue, I'd still come back to the fact of life cycle. It is not fair to compare the opportunities that a DB plan can get versus a DC plan participant because we know market goes through cycles. In the very long run, we know that taking risk will pay off. However, it's not a very steady, average kind of process. We expect return to be generating 7% a year. We know that's not going to happen. We probably wouldn't have a single year that would get exactly 7% return. So, the name of the game is really to steady, stay in the game for the long run. And individuals simply do not have that luxury. You really, when you get older, you cannot stay the course. And what if your timing is entirely wrong? In the years, you can take the risk, market does not deliver. And in the years, market deliver. You do not have the luxury to take the risk anymore because you're getting older. You have to take money off, take risk off the table and buy more steady kind of investments. So, individuals actually do not have that ability to time that. And a hybrid plan does because it's a perpetuity. And when you go in the market as a perpetuity, you're much stronger. You, you, it's, your tools, the tools that can, you can afford to have, individuals simply do not have. So, that is the economy, economy of scale that really will support the assumption that a hybrid plan can generate more return than anybody's...
But if DB plans are so perfect, why did the entire country shift away from them?
That's a great question. Okay, I actually want to bring, private, provide the perspective. 15 years ago, nobody has an issue with DB plan. Most DB plans are 100% to 100, over 100% funded in this country. That was in the late 90s. Now, what happened? Why today we're facing DB plans being a really terrible name? Everybody think of DB plans as expensive and as being underfunded. That is because when people created DB plans, they did not expect returns that we experienced in the late 90s. Now, when late 90s happened, well, you're supposed to average out the return. So, if you have a 10-year period where you have double-digit returns every year, that wasn't the case in 1990s. Every plan is overfunded and people went back to say, well, maybe we underestimated how much we can earn. Maybe we can increase the, we can, we can increase our benefit. That's why all the DB plans are in trouble was because after 1990s, when people, when the plans were overfunded, everybody passed legislations to increase benefits. Now, we obviously did not take into consideration the next 10 years with single-digit return 10.
But aren't you supposed to have that long-term horizon, the great DB plan?
That's right, that's right. So, we were supposed to...
But it wasn't there then and now you're saying it's going to be there now?
Senator, no, what I'm saying is that humans actually got away with the lack of discipline. When we looked at higher returns...
That's a, that's a human tendency.
That is a whole human, so, we were just saying that. So, to protect this plan, we really need to keep in mind that the market returns are not really a straight line. There are going to be years we're experiencing great return, but let's not forget, that is because the next few years, we may be experiencing terrible return. And a human life may not, may not be long enough for us to see the long-run average. We really need to keep to the discipline and the principle that, you know, we, we are trying to, trying to...
You manage the current DB plan?
I'm the, I'm the investment consultant to the DB plan.
Are you paid on a percentage of assets on the?
I am not, no. We're fixed fees.
Okay.
So, I guess bottom line, DB plan by definition, by itself, is not a problem. It is how prudently structure the benefit to, to be proportional to what can be achieved. That is the issue. We, you know, this country did not have a DB plan crisis in the late 90s. It was the added benefit and contribution holidays that really destroyed the DB plan as a whole.
All of those things that would still technically exist?
It is, that is correct. So, discipline is important, yes.
Any different?
I have some questions and I know it's almost 9 o'clock and I'll just ask the questions for the record and that maybe the committee can relate to you if you can provide the answers to the committee. I would appreciate it. The four questions. How would this new hybrid plan impact your security ratio? And, you know, of course, there's this concern about what's going on in CNMI because that was an issue. Question number two, how would this impact the...
Regardless of the hour, I think it's imperative that we get the answer publicly because I think the people need to hear that.
Oh, okay.
Because it's, it's important that everybody understand.
I just didn't know that you wanted to say...
No, no, no. We'll, we'll stay.
Okay.
But I think it's important. I don't want the committee to receive that information and the listening audience does not. So, I think someone respond to that because the security ratio, as I understand it, is secured in this one. And so, I need the answer.
Yeah, we, we do have that number. The current security ratio under the DB plan is 49.49%. And if 100% transfer from the hybrid, or from the DC to the hybrid, the security ratio would increase to 51.77%. That's because the assets that would be transferring over is a higher percent funded than the current DB.
And if 100% don't transfer over, as asked with Senator Lim Teo, how would that affect that ratio?
Okay, so, so, it would, it would depend on who transfers over. If nobody transfers over, there's no change to the security ratio. So, that's the lowest number. If nobody transfers over, it stays the same. If the over age 50 transfer over, the security ratio would increase to 49.76%. And that's sort of the next level up. And as more people transfer over, it increases from there.
I was just going to say, and what we're thinking is the propensity for those at 50 to transfer over are going to be much higher, obviously. So...
Okay. How would this impact the new government accounting reporting standards?
So, so the new reporting standards are going to require that the unfunded liability get placed right up in the...
Mm-hmm, you're right.
And so, that happens with or without the hybrid plan. The marginal effect of the hybrid plan is about $100 million increase to the unfunded liability. So, that gets added on.
Okay, and then, so now the next one will be, how would the cost of the hybrid affect our bond rating?
The cost of the hybrid affect the bond rating? I don't, I don't know necessarily how we can, I mean, there are a lot of metrics that go into a bond rating and, you know, I know we have some folks from GITA who are able to much more confidently speak to how that, how that plays in. But certainly, you know, you have to think that, you know, a unfunded liability, conceptually to a, to a bond rating is going to have a negative impact. But that unfunded liability wasn't, you know, isn't something that was, that wasn't considered. I have to imagine that was something that was there. It wasn't just, it wasn't, it was part of a footnote, but certainly something that was considered, so...
And of course, the last is that, you know, like you said, you know, it fluctuates. We don't know how the economy, you know, would do and, and how would the government then be paying for these benefits should there be then that, that drop, a shift, of course, in even revenues that, for the government? And then, of course, how then would we, this impact on other critical agencies?
Sure. So, benefits are typically paid for through trust assets, right? And contribution rates are what we're looking towards the government to, to pay in order to keep the fund growing and being able to sustain itself in, in what we call perpetuity forever. And so, provided that, that the, that the employer, in this case, the government, is able to, to continue to make that contribution rate after 2031, that contribution rate comes down significantly, right? It goes down to 5.66% of, of total payroll. But up until that point, if the government continues to make that, that payment, then, then we will be able to make payroll. We're not worried about, we're not worried about, you know, much else. I mean, everything else is on us to, to, the fund to manage. That is investment returns and, you know, ensuring that benefit payments are not growing without being paid for and things of that nature. But we look to the government to make the contribution rate.
And are there any, like a security, safety net, you know, for the employees with their, their investments, protecting the employee, the employees for any uncertainty, of course, of any market actions?
So, on the DB side, employees are, the retirement fund contractually obligates itself to make a certain payment. For the old plan, that's the 2% for the first 10 years and, you know, 2.5% for the balance. That's the government, that's the employer's contractual responsibility. So, how market moves, you know, and how assets shift on the individual account basis for a DB member is, is not relevant necessarily because we make the commitment, the government makes a commitment that they're going to make a pension benefit at the end of, of an employee's retirement. It's more important, I think, on the DC side that, that they, where it's self-directed, that the employee makes the right investment choices. And I think that's the point we were trying to make in that employees who start on, with the government are employees first and do not necessarily take an active role in retirement planning. And so, oftentimes, what has happened, for whatever reason, is that they go through their mid, through their mid-career and realize that they don't have enough to retire. And without the benefit of a social security plan or a secondary source of retirement, they end up not being able to have enough. I mean, that's a clear disaster waiting to happen. And so, what the, what the hybrid plan was trying to do was address that by establishing a safety net, a floor. And that floor is the basis by which I think, addresses your question, the safety that is going to be there in the event that there, that market fluctuations or that they invest incorrectly. The hybrid plan, the base benefit was what was created to address that exact problem.
And so, would that be a government liability or a company's offering that guarantee would take on that liability?
Sure. So, the government, the short answer is the government, right? The government's providing that benefit in the way of the, we're calling some, you know, we're calling it a hybrid, we're calling it a DB, we're calling it the new plan. But in the end, it's, it's a, it's a fixed pension that is not as attractive, you know, I mean, that, that has a different factor than the, than the old DB plan. But it's, but it's premised on the notion that it's to create a safety net. And in addition to what they are able to earn on the DC side, that is, the 457 plan, will combine to create an overall retirement plan. It's not equal, but, but it is, you know, to some degree meant to be equitable in that it creates a pension plan where the DC is one component of an overall pension plan, we think.
And to go back to that original scenario that I gave you, where, you know, it's mandating it, let's say that versus the, keeping the 5% of the government's, the employer contribution, but then in this case, mandating instead the amount that you're even suggesting at, you know, 10.5%. Have you, can we see that kind of scenario, what that would look like? I'd like to see that. The second thing I'd like to see really is that not the average of the $40,000 employee, but I want to see the, those at the entry level, what exactly their take-home pay would be after all the deductions and their contributions because if you just take 50% off from, you know, your chart number six on your hybrid plan of $161.54, then it'd be like $82 would be deducted from an entry-level employee. And what would that really look like also for them? So, if we can, I'd like to see those two and can give it to the chairman. First, I know you're going to have to do some calculations here.
If you can answer it now. If you can answer it now, great. If not, I think the one thing that in at least the, the private conversations that I've had with some of you, the Speaker has some great concerns and she's also Chair of Education. And I think the discussions that we had about the DOE employees, she's talking about the ones that are, are under the 4D. And all these DOE employees, many of them are there. I didn't realize that's where some of the non, non minimum wage employees were, that's where they were at. But I think you all explained to me some of your concerns about those kinds of employees and I think if she understands how this is going to assist them, we might have a, be able to convince her that this is something she can support. But I really do think you need to talk to, about what's happening with the DOE employees and, and what's going to be happening with them.
Mr. Vice Speaker, I think it's not only what they're going to have in terms of the difference on the hybrid, it's also what they would have on a DC plan and a social security plan compared to the hybrid because those are the choices that we, that we need to look at. We need to help people along that scale. But again, it's going to be comparative, I think. It's going to be less, we know that. But how much less? Is it going to be less than DC? No. Is it going to be less than social security? No.
I think, I think you, you understand what I'm trying to get at. I, there, there was some discussion about the DOE employees and I really do think that we've got to make that public at this point so people understand what we're trying to address and how some of them are probably the 3,000 that aren't going to make it and don't have that additional amount.
The reality, Senator, and we'll go back to the DOE history, and I know this because I've worked the DC plan for over 10 years and from experience, the way DOE hires those lower-paid individuals is by a school year basis. And so, they're hired on October 16 or August 16 when the school year starts. Their contract terminates the last day of school. After they get that GG1, they go straight to the retirement fund and withdraw their retirement contributions. That's done every year. And you'll see that if you just go up to retirement fund in August, the influx of DOE employees, you go up there in June, you see the influx of DOE employees doing the same thing. So, if the issue here is trying to address those individuals, that's probably a policy issue in terms of personnel policy that may be addressed outside the retirement fund realm. But that's the experience that the Vice Speaker was talking about. And it's true, it happens. School aides... School aides, like you said, one-to-one aides, it's just the reality of what's happening at specifically DOE.
But they would still be able to do that under the hybrid plan?
Yes, I mean, they're...
But they wouldn't be able to do that with social security?
Yeah, they can if they quit.
Yeah, and remember, that's what I said very early on too, that some of these things are just going to have to close, you know?
Right, right. And that's a policy call on that side. And yes, Senator, you can't do that with social security, but then you also deal with the funding issue with social security. Include, that's a personnel issue, not necessarily a retirement fund issue. You don't want retirement fund policing personnel issues.
You had another question, Senator.
Thank you, Chairman. The other question I had was regarding the 457 plan. There's a 1% mandatory participation that's part of the hybrid plan, but a lot of the testimony earlier talked about the inefficiencies of an individual investor and their discipline level, right, on whether they're going to properly manage that. Why would, why would the board choose to include that, considering the testimony that basically is saying, you know, you can't rely on these individual investors to properly put their money towards, you know, a responsible thing? And the second question, a lead-on question to that is, was the rate of return in the hybrid plan at 7%? Did it also assume a 7% rate of return for the 457 plan?
Well, I'll answer the second part. The rate of return for the 457 was 5% in our assumptions.
It was 5%, not 7%?
Right.
Senator, with regard to the inefficiency of the DC plan, there is a slide that actually came from a national survey in the packet that looks like this, if you have the slides. You have, okay. So the national survey says that, on average, a DC plan participant has 60% in stocks. That sounds actually a pretty good number. However, if you look deep down, there is a pattern that looks like this, which is to say that the 60% average number was not really a representative asset allocation for a participant. It is the average, and the representative asset allocation is actually on both sides. There are people who take 100% stocks, people who take 0% stocks. The average turned out to be 60%. And neither 100% nor 0% is the right answer for anybody. So more than half the participants took a stance that is a failing kind of strategy, even though the national average turns out to be 60%, looks pretty balanced. That highlighted the fact that it is a tremendously difficult task for somebody to choose an efficient path and continue to be on that efficient path to manage its retirement asset. It simply is not realistic to require somebody, you know, to perform at that level.
I guess that's, I guess that's the question, is why would you make it part of the hybrid plan then? Why wouldn't you just manage the entire asset allocation and just increase it by 1%?
Oh, I see.
That's the question, is why, a lot of the testimony regarding the, one's ability to properly invest has been cited, yet you choose to keep it as a mandatory 1% rather than just roll it into 11.5 or, excuse me, all into plan? So that's the question, is why did you choose to make the 457 plan part of it? What was the logic behind it? Because the testimony would suggest that you would otherwise not include it.
So currently, there is, the 457 does exist for even DB members, where they do have the option to invest, you know, their 1% or do it. We made it mandatory to give, to give employees that upside potential, you know, I mean, if they wanted to invest more and take that self-directed path, just as the current DB members have, they have that option, or they can, they can do that. The 9.5% again was, the premise was to create a safety net, and the DB part of the hybrid plan, we felt, did just that. But the upside potential was available for them to invest self-directedly.
So the, there is the benefit of tax-deferred compounding, because somebody can contribute to that vehicle without, you know, the contribution being subject to taxes. And the compounding effect is another added benefit. Instead of somebody has to, you know, provide investment outside of that vehicle, you have to pay taxes when, when that...
I think one more, just to respond to your questions, Senator. One more thing to consider is that the objective was to provide a floor. But one thing we keep saying is, I mean, everyone's bashing the DC plan. The DC plan exists all over the world and it's successful, because what we're losing sight of here is that there is the upside to the DC plan, and it does provide an additional benefit above the floor. So that's why there's that combination. And like I said earlier, the reason why there's the combination is because there's a balance between who assess, who takes on the risk. And as you know this, on the DB side, the retirement fund or the government takes on the greater degree of risk on, to provide the floor. But if the, if the participant wanted to enhance that floor, then yeah, I would take more risk if I wanted more money. So that's, that's the balance approach that we were going after.
Mr. Chair, will we be able to hear testimony from other participants?
Oh, yes. I mean, it all depends on how late we want to stay. I've reserved this room for tomorrow night and for Thursday night to allow whoever wants to, you know, any other employees. I was thinking that if everybody wanted additional time to review the documents that were presented, we could do it tomorrow night. If any of one wants to speak tonight, you may do so. And I see Mr. John wants to speak tonight, so if everybody just, we'll have, we'll hear him. Everybody has no more questions for this group. David, you want to come speak? And President Okada, you wish to speak? Sure. Actually, you signed up first, so we'll get you. You were the first one. You were very early.
Mary.
And Mr. David John was number three, so I'm not showing favoritism or anything, it's just whoever signed up. Go ahead.
David, Mary.
Did I understand, there's also a Joan when you signed in here? No, she's going to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Howdy and good evening. My name is Mary Okada, President of the Guam Community College. Thank you again for allowing me this opportunity. Honorable Vice Speaker Cruz and members of the committee, thank you for this, again, opportunity to provide feedback on Bill Number 394-32. The Guam Community College wholeheartedly supports this bill. We've collected over 150 signatures from the campus to support this and some folks that have come to the campus basically to sign our petition. The reality of the government of Guam's current defined contribution retirement plan is that most of the employees enrolled in this system simply do not have the financial expertise required to effectively manage their retirement fund at a level that would benefit them. I can attest to the fact that there are dozens of employees that want to retire but who cannot afford under the current DC plan. The hybrid plan proposed in Bill 394-32, which was written in consultation with the Retirement Fund Board, will guarantee government employees some type of annuity. This plan will not only be more beneficial to the employees, but also it will benefit the employers. Currently, the government of Guam will have to, will continue to have employees that are unable to retire for financial reasons. These aging workers are and will continue to be absorbed by the agencies, while the agencies will still have to hire more productive employees. A hybrid retirement plan will allow these people to retire with at least a small guaranteed annuity. I strongly urge the members of the 32nd Guam Legislature to adopt 394-32 into law. It will provide the government's aging workforce with a dignified way to retire after serving their island, and it will benefit the entire government workforce in the long run. And I prepared this testimony, but after hearing some of the comments tonight, I'd just like to add, and excuse my expression, food for thought. There are still some holes in the DB plan. You need to take a look at them. I know, Senator St. Nicholas, you brought up a case about people working for the private sector for so many years and then coming back. There are still members in the DB plan who were members of the plan, left the government of Guam, and 15 or 20 years later, they're still under the DB plan. There are still members of the DB plan that, given the scenario that Senator Barnes brought up, where they quit on Friday and they return to work on Monday, where they still have the opportunity to quit and pay into education service or military service. Those are holes that you can take a look at to plug that plan. They still exist. GCC has several, has had several requests. I've had requests. I do not entertain requests for people to withdraw their retirement. It's a difficult thing for me to do, but it does not guarantee them anything. And so I've tried. Some individuals choose to resign. That's their choice. It is up to the government agency heads to allow them to come back under their reemployment rights. That's not always the case for GCC employees. So they are very careful to request that type of accommodation, because that's very difficult for me to say, you are taking away your ability to retire by allowing me to offer you this loophole. That's something that's, you know, very important to me because I understand how people are going to struggle. So yes, the cost component that is not identified here is, yes, we can go through the whole calculations, but in the end, even though it may not show either in unfunded or, you know, these other things, the cost of it's going to be in the form of what we provide in terms of welfare. We're not calculating any of that now. So somebody, in addition to, how much is a person going to make? How much are they going to take? You know, how much the government's going to pay? Calculate what it's going to cost you? If all these people decided to go, I mean, to take out their money or took whatever they have in their DC plan, what does the government cost to pay for these people in terms of welfare? Calculate that as well and then use that to balance and to make your decisions. Because, and like I said, I had this testimony presented, but I wanted to just, I didn't let you know that there's still some holes in the DB plan. And through policy, although a very difficult thing, you can address those. For example, if somebody left the government service 10 or 15 years ago, when they come back, don't give them an option to come back to the DB plan. Because that option right now still exists. So that's my testimony this evening. It's very short because, you know, I, we collected the signatures at GCC and I felt it was my responsibility to stay here and at least provide them with testimony on their behalf.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Mr. John?
Good afternoon, committee. My name is David John and President of ASC Trust Corporation. I have some testimony I put together here. Some of this stuff's been covered, so I might jump around a little bit to keep us going so we can be in bed on time. But I wanted to cover this and come tonight. I'm testifying as a businessman, a taxpayer, and someone who's very concerned about the retirement of the workers of the government of Guam, as I think it's clear tonight, we have a major situation facing the community. So I would like to thank Senator Limtiaco for sponsoring Bill 346 and Act to Create a Separate Board of Trustees for the DC plan. I'd like to thank Senator St. Nicholas and Congresswoman Bredalio for agreeing to petition the federal government to allow our workers into the social security system. And I'd like to thank Senator Cruz for introducing Bill 394 regarding the creation of this hybrid bill. While I've been advocating the need for change from the current DC plan to just about anyone that could listen over the last 15 years, and I think if anyone, you know, I think everyone in front of me today is knowing I've been talking about this for years, far out ahead of the curve than the current board. That being said, this current structure, this bill, I'm not for, and I'll give you the following reasons. Also, in order for me to kind of testify what's with here, I'm going to be critical of the Gov-Guam Retirement Fund Board. This isn't personal. I like pretty much everybody on the board and I apologize if I step on anybody's toes. Before I explain my position on Bill 394, I'd like to take a couple minutes to discuss how we got into this situation. The reason I bring it up is not to kick a dead horse, but in an effort to demonstrate that GGRF's decision-making process toward the DC plan members has constituted a major part of the current problem and that a change in leadership for the DC plan is needed if we're going to get things better. In the mid-1990s, the unfunded liability of the Gov-Guam defined benefit plan was out of control. If the government did nothing, they ran the chance that the territory would go into bankruptcy. In an attempt to fix this, we set up this DC plan in 1995. We can have healthy arguments on whether the government should have switched to a defined contribution plan, and each side of the debate could make valid arguments. However, I don't think anybody can justify GGRF's decision to fund a defined contribution plan at 10% of pay, which allows employees to take hardship distribution loans and lump-sum distributions at retirement without a social security safety net. The result of GGRF's decision to fund this plan in this manner is thousands of families are running the risk of retiring in poverty. This is not only a problem for the families involved, but as Mary pointed out, it's a community issue. If something's not done to reverse this current trend, the island's social programs will be exposed. The initial decision to fund the DC plan at 10% without social security, if that wasn't bad enough, GGRF understood early on that the plan would be not enough to support the government workers. I had conversations with them starting in 2000. In 2005, Director Paula Bloss was interviewed by the Guam Business News. She said, "The creation of the DC plan was to the government's demise. We're setting ourselves up to become one big welfare state. Guam is headed for a social crisis," she said. Yet while the board acknowledged the plan was creating a crisis, they did nothing to introduce any bills until 2012, when they first introduced the hybrid bill. Then when it didn't make it out of committee, it took two more years for a revised plan to come through. Which leads me to the question, how many people really understand what this plan is? I hear Mary had 150 people sign up at the college to support this bill. But as Senator Cruz pointed out, I spoke last week at the Association of Government Accountants. The room consisted of 100-plus accountants, most of which were either employed or involved with government accounting at one level or another. I challenged the group. I asked them, "I'll give anyone who can come up in front of us today and explain this bill, I'll give you 10 bucks." I mean, I know I'm being cheap. If I said 100, maybe someone would have come up. But the point is, I talked to many people that day and no one understood the bill. This is your accountants who are supposed to be accounting for this plan, budgeting for this plan, and no one understood the bill. One accountant came close, but this person thought that this would be in addition to social security. When the accountant heard it wasn't in addition to social security, it wasn't quite the same conversation. So we're here today to discuss a bill that will turn all government budgets upside down, or at least the personal budgets, and not one government accountant in a room of government accountants could explain the bill prior to, 100 days prior to we're supposed to be enacting this bill. I ask you what could possibly go wrong? Which leads to the question I keep getting asked, what's a hybrid plan? I heard the things talked about tonight, what a hybrid plan is, but just maybe simplify it to a point. You have a defined benefit plan that defines what we have at retirement, a defined contribution plan, which defines what we have contributing into the plan. The hybrid plan blends the characteristics of the DC and the DB plan, the most popular being a hybrid plan, which is called a cash balance plan, which would take a lot of the concerns out of the table that were addressed tonight. This plan's a defined benefit plan that defines how much an employee will have at retirement in the form of a lump-sum distribution as opposed to an income distribution, which is what we're talking about now. Under a cash balance plan, investment risks are borne by the employer. So if the big concern here is that we're going to earn 5% as opposed to 7%, which I agree with, by the way, it's a very hard thing, I manage DC plans, and it's a very hard thing to do it on an individual level. I always thought it'd be great if you could have it set up where the employee could just come into the plan and get a guaranteed rate of return. They can. It's called a cash balance plan. It's what, if you asked nine out of 10 people who are in my field what a hybrid plan is, they would call a cash balance plan. So we certainly can guarantee the return. You could have the 15% going into a plan and guarantee a 7% return. If it underfunds it, the government's on the hook for it. But we don't have to talk about setting up a brand-new defined benefit plan. about setting up a brand-new defined benefit plan. This is not what GGRF's proposing. GGRF's utilizing a much brighter, broader definition of hybrid plan. According to NASRA, the National Association of State Retirement Administrators, the IRS considers any defined benefit plan that accounts for employee contributions to be called a hybrid plan, which I think answers your question, Senator. Why would you set up a plan with a 1 percent savings account after trashing it the way they did tonight, unless it was for a reason? Without the 1 percent savings account, this is not a hybrid plan. We can't be in the newspapers saying we're setting up a hybrid plan. We're not going to get the rally behind this as a hybrid plan. It's a defined benefit plan. Now, I'm not against defined benefit plans. They can work brilliantly. There's no such thing as better between a DC plan, a DB plan, and social security. You can pick it, I can give you an example of each one being the best thing possible. So I'm not trashing a defined benefit plan, but if, if, if this was supposed to be a defined benefit plan, then why not call it just that? Instead, we have a plan that has a 1 percent savings vehicle, and then we have a defined benefit wrapped around it. Now, what's really clear about this is that DC contribution, the 1 percent, doesn't come into any of these retirement benefit calculations. All the calculations are on the defined benefit side of things. The 1 percent's just a little extra savings account, and there's nothing wrong with having an extra amount of money at retirement. It's awesome. And there's nothing wrong with introducing it so we can get people to save more money. That would be great. But not, by putting that in there, it's quite disingenuous, if you ask me. Columnist, I'm sorry, if, if GGRF believes that the solution is the DB plan, I respect that, but let's call it what it is. It's a one, it's a, it's a defined benefit plan with a 1 percent defined contribution account attached to it. Have that argument, we can have that argument, you know, going back and forth and have the discussion on that. In my opinion, GGRF knew the community and the employees of the government would not tolerate another defined benefit plan. And, and if the fact that this bill is really a defined benefit plan legislation is not concerning enough, then the outright statement that the structure of the hybrids plan will save the government 10 percent over the implementation of social security plus a DC retirement system should be called into question. How on earth anyone tells this community that a new DB plan will save the government and taxpayers' money is troubling, to say the least. The government has a closed defined benefit plan on the books with over $1.4 billion underfunded, consuming approximately 25 percent of the government's current payroll, even though no new members have entered since 1995. So far, the territory has avoided the plan bankrupting its coffers by contributing excess amounts of its tax base to a frozen defined benefit plan. However, you only need to look north, where I have the work in, in Enemai, to know that what could happen to our economy if, if our economy sours, what this plan could do to us. The GGRF defined benefit plan was not always in this current state. As the speaker pointed out, in 1968, the social security was offered to the government of Guam. It was turned down. In 1968, the cost to, to the government of this plan was only 7.25 percent. It was a lot less expensive than going into social security. Social security looked expensive. However, over the years, due to investment performance, changing mortality tables, as Jerry Cruz pointed out, early-out programs, unfunded changes in benefits, not things, not things that are responsible for the board, they were, they were handed these, but they made the plan more and more expensive. So in '72, the cost went up to 7.697 percent. '81, it went up to 10.699 percent. '92, it jumped to 13.665 percent. Fast forward to 2000, the same plan costs 20.81 percent, and as previously stated, we're now over 25 percent, which I think goes to Senator St. Nicholas's issues. What's to say this isn't going to happen again? I had someone on the, I was sitting up here tonight saying, "Oh, it's not going to happen this time, it'll be different." How is that? I mean, you go back in history and go forward. Why are we only saying the things that are going to be positive on this? Who's to say that things aren't going to line up just the way they did last time? If payroll costs are about 70 percent of the entire government's budget, which is what I've been told, then the frozen defined benefit plan is consuming somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 percent of all our tax revenues right now. It's frozen. What's to say what this plan does to us? This is money not going to the police department, not going to the Department of Education, and not going to the hospital. Is there anyone in the room that would call that plan less expensive for the government and the taxpayers of Guam? I don't think so. Further to the point, in 1995, the DC plan with a 10 percent contribution rate and no social security was billed to the community as a cost-saving measure for the government. Does anyone call this current situation a deal today? In attempting to introduce a new DB plan under the less-threatening hybrid plan isn't concerning enough, GGRF never reached out to key community stakeholders. Implementing a new DB plan certainly should have been discussed with the government's bond underwriters, to determine what the effect of 20 years of $100 million? We don't think that's going to affect, I don't know how much. I'm on the EAT's board, I help, you know, I work on the bonds, but I don't know how much it is, but I made one phone call to San Francisco and asked, "Can you look at this bill that's pending and tell me, do you think it's going to affect our bond underwriting in the future?" Yes. How much? We're not sure. But it's going to cost something, but yet somehow it's going to save 10 percent. I'm not against having a, having a discussion that's honest, but when you don't bring the bond underwriting into play, it's just flawed. Additionally, with all the flaws the current DC plan has, one of the features that has worked well is one of the things Senator St. Nicholas keeps getting to, and that's the ability to move back and forth from private to public. One of the problems with, with the old sys, I mean, to stand my, stand my points here, returning to a DB system with no social security will create an unnatural barrier to the island's economy, taking us back to two-sector economy where workers will once again need to choose a career path early on, like they did 20 years ago. You either work for the government, or you work for the private sector. You're either a, a schoolteacher at, at Untalon Middle School, or you're at St. Anthony. But jumping back and forth became very costly to your family. We're now talking about going back to this situation. Yet, from what I've been told, none of the major business groups, such as the Chamber of Commerce, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, GHRA, the contractors, or the Employers Council, were never asked to provide input on the potential cost to this type of structure we'll have on their respective industries. Which, again, begs the question, how can GGRF claim that the DB format will save the government any money when it hasn't factored in the effects that the plan could have on future borrowing costs and an inefficient workforce? Regarding costs, the bill clarifies that it's going to be 1 percent for the employees, nine and a half percent, 1 percent for the DC plan, plus another nine and a half for the DB plan. However, the bill itself doesn't go into what these, what the, what the employer contribution is. Kind of goes back and forth, but somehow, if you believe the numbers, the government is not going to contribute any amount in more money over the years. The employees are going to contribute 5 percent more, but the benefits are going to go sky-high through the roof. It's simply, the, the, the bill itself simply states, "The employer contributions on behalf of members on the retirement fund shall be in accordance and applicable with Section 8137, Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 4, or the government shall make contributions based on actuarial funded basis." The hybrid plan is being sold as saving the government 10 percent over a DC with social security. How is it possible to make such a statement and then turn around and not provide the contribution rate within the bill? I know that was covered tonight, so maybe that's mute. I hope this body knows me by now. I'm not somebody that goes around crying wolf, and I don't create hyperbole out of common issues. But I'm telling you, this is no common issue, and the legislature, legislature needs to get it right this time. The government of Guam has twice tried to set up retirement systems apart from social security. The results, after factoring in the unfunding of the DC plan the last 20 years, is the community is currently on the hook for liabilities, you throw in the extra $100 million, that exceeds 30 percent of our gross island product. The island cannot afford to get this wrong a third time. If this new plan is incorrectly structured this time around, GGRF could literally bankrupt the territory, and you'd only need to look north to know it's not hyperbole. Simply put, you cannot pass a bill of this magnitude, pretty much, when, when no one understands outside GGRF, including the government's own accountants, with a 100-day implementation timeline, without understanding the effects of future borrowing costs, without discussing with major employer groups the cost of the overall economy in creating a two-tiered workforce, and without knowing the unfunded liability created by a proposed plan or the unanticipated government contribution formula. I'm asking you to take a step back, reevaluate the situation, and get, and, and get the legislature involved with designing a plan to help the employees of the workers of the government of Guam to retire successfully, using a structure consistent with the private sector. I believe the optimal method to accomplish this goal lies in Bill 346 introduced by Senator Limtiaco. It is more of a process than a final solution. Bill 346 acknowledges that the government of Guam Retirement Fund Board of Trustees is statutorily mandated to protect the financial viability of the defined benefit plan. As such, members of the board, whether they represent the DB plan or the DC plan, must first advocate the financial solvency of the DB plan, even if it's not in the best interests of the DC members. Bill 346 is solution-agnostic. Instead of advocating a specific plan design, the bill establishes a new board that will be charged with protecting the interests of the DC members. The first item the new board should address is social security and whether that's an option for the Gov-Guam employees. If it is, the board should be charged with designing a plan encompassing social security. If not, then the system should be created without it. Heck, who knows? It might end up being the same bill. Secondly, the new board should be charged with breaking up the problems facing the current DC into two distinct issues, and that's one of the problems with this thing altogether, I think. We have a problem. We've underfunded something for 20 years, and now we want to fix the problem, which, if we started fixing it today going forward, the problem would be finite. Instead of putting a fence around it and fixing that problem by creating a, some sort of a hybrid plan to fix what we've done so far, and then going forward with what we should do if this was a brand-new plan, we're trying to combine these two things together and keep our current issue in perpetuity. So I think one of the big things that should be done is, we should fund this thing going forward in a, in a system that allows for employees to move from private sector to public sector, back and forth, and do it right. Circle back, find out what's shorted for the employees, and we have shorted them, and I have been vocal about that for the last 15 years. And I want to say, if you'd listened to me, it wouldn't have happened, but if you listened, if it was listened, it wouldn't have happened. Then we, we can sit there and we can have a plan going forward that works for both the private and the public sector, and we can take care of these families that have not been done right by the current system. Once the new board has examined these issues, they should be charged with providing the results to the legislature and the stakeholders of the community. I have some ideas I think should be win-win for the DC members and the community as a whole, and would be happy to share them with you, or answering your questions today or at a later date. I thank you for listening to my thoughts and concerns. I know I've been kind of harsh on some people, I'm sorry about that. I also, even though I disagree with your, with your bill, Senator, I want to thank you for introducing it. I know, I know you're passionate about this, and, and having the discussion, even if I'm against it, is, is better than, than nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's hear your testimony, and then we'll ask the questions. Please introduce yourself first, all right?
I'm Ken Murphy. I'm from the Georgia State Department. If, if you're going to continue this tomorrow, maybe I, I, I do my reading tomorrow.
Okay.
If that's fine with you.
No, that, that's even better. That's fine. Well, then we'll just focus the questions on Mr. John. Any questions? Yep? Okay.
That was easy. I didn't turn it in, but I'll, I can send it over. Yes.
All right. What we'll do, it is 9:35 now. Let's recess until tomorrow at 6 o'clock. At that point, I'm inviting as many Gov-Guam retire, employees who wish to come and speak, and whoever want, else wants to come and speak on, on this issue. We'll go for several hours tomorrow, and if we have more people, I guess I'll have another hearing on Thursday, but I will at least have a hearing tomorrow, so we'll stand in recess until 6 o'clock tomorrow evening, and invite as many people who want to come and speak on this issue as possible. All right?